Okay, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. It is Tuesday, March 26th. It is approximately 7:40 PM. And I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being video and audio taped. First item of business tonight is a review of Oak Knoll Estate subdivision plan for endorsement. However, we've received a request to postpone, Betsy, until April the 11th.
That's right, we just have some legal documents to have reviewed by town council, but I'll actually get them to town council and hopefully we'll be ready on April 11th.
Okay. The next, it puts us almost on schedule here. So the next item of business is a continuation of the public hearing for 242 Dedham Street. This is a site plan modification. So I see our friends here, I see Mr. Quagliari and his engineer. So would one of you like to address the board in terms of the activities that have taken place here since the meeting almost two weeks ago?
Yes, Evan Wilmouth. Basically, we went through all the comments from the previous meeting, made the revisions to the plan. There were some issues with the drainage. I supplied Tom with some of the information he requested just today. But basically, as far as I can tell, we had the meeting with the design review board last night and except for some modifications, which minor modifications they want, added to the plan as far as the design of the building, we basically brought everything up into compliance with what was requested.
Tom?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think Evan has correctly characterized the situation. We've had a lot of communications over the last few days, and I think we're pretty well through the issues at this juncture. I think as of a few days ago, we had about half a dozen comments that weren't completely resolved, and I think we've worked our way through those at this point. Our original comment 31 had to do with defining the limits of curbing. That's pretty well defined on the plan now. I think if there's any doubt, and it is my understanding, that the curbing on the site is typically going to be precast except for the sloped curbing in the drive-through area and some vertical granite out at Route 1A. So I think that could be just perhaps clarified as one of the conditions of approval, just to make entirely clear where the limits of curbing are. Comment number 33, we had some issues with how the dumpster was going to function in terms of vehicle access. Mr. Wilmouth informed me, and also it says on the detail relating to the dumpster, that there are going to be three, four-yard rollout dumpsters, which simply can be pushed out of the enclosure and then can be accessed by the trash truck that is sent to service them. So that issue is put to bed. Comments 52, 53, 54 related to the issue of soil testing. And Mr. Wilmouth provided us with some soil test data that was obtained in regard to the conjunction, the construction of 242 Dedham Street, which is immediately next door. The test pits on the 242 property and the test pit data that was provided on the adjacent property basically are consistent. The sea horizon in all those test pits is either fine sand, medium sand, or loamy sand. And an appropriate exfiltration rate there could be considered as high as two minutes per inch or perhaps even higher. Mr. Wilmouth used a 1.327, but much lower than that. So the exfiltration rate is conservative. I think we're all right with groundwater. The test pits on our site are fine. There are two test pits on the 242 site that the groundwater elevation in them is 191.7. Evan had calculated the mounded height underneath the recharge facility as 3.8 feet for the 100-year event. So if you add the groundwater elevation and the mound of groundwater, it would be right at the bottom of the proposed recharge facility. And the bottom of the recharge facility is supposed to be two feet above. But I think it may be all right because the two test pits that show the highest groundwater elevation, they didn't exactly, they didn't actually observe groundwater in those test pits. They simply stopped excavating at that elevation. And the rule is that if you never spot groundwater, then it's assumed to be at the base of the test pit. So in reality, we know it's a little lower than that. Is it an inch lower than that? Is it 10 feet lower than that? Well, if you look at the other test pits, it's probably a fair amount lower. But the other couple of things that come into play, the 191.7 was done several years ago when a groundwater adjustment factor was always required. The groundwater adjustment factor on these two test pits was 3.8 feet, almost 4 feet. Those test pits were taken on April 25th. And if they were taken now on April 25th, you would not need a groundwater adjustment because that's considered within the high groundwater season. The only thing that makes it a little bit fuzzy is the test pits there don't have what we'd require today because they don't show models. They don't say that they weren't on, they just don't address the issue. But if you look at the totality of the test pit data, my thought would be that the 195.5 elevation, which is the bottom of their system, is probably going to end up two feet above groundwater. My recommendation was, where there's a little bit of doubt here, is to excavate a test pit during construction and just verify that before the stone is placed and before any of the structures are placed. That should be a pretty minimal cost at that point because you've got excavation equipment there and everything like that. You just need fundamentally somebody to witness it. So that takes care of 52, 53.
Just question on that, Tom, if you don't mind. Are we still utilizing the aggressive schedule that Mr. Domi did for years on this?
In terms of the adjustments?
Yes.
No, we're not.
Okay. So none of these test pits are reflecting, you know, that arbitrary number that Bill used to assign?
Yes. The two of concern, the 191.7, have a 3.8-foot adjustment built into them.
I thought you said, but why are we building that in if we're not using it?
Because they're test pits of record. We don't know the circumstances under which they were taken. As I say, also, if the test pit showed models or said no models shown, we'd have greater confidence. So it's just, you know, generally what we do on the Board of Health now, and I'm kind of carrying that through, we don't change old test pit data. If somebody comes in and says high groundwater was here, we just accept that. But my thought would be, as I say, if the test pits were taken now, A, we'd observe models to kind of confirm it, but B, if it was taken on April 25th, which is when these were taken.
Right.
The Board of Health would not apply a correction factor at all. It's within the acceptable season. It's before April 30th.
Therefore, the extra 3.8 would be...
Is likely not there.
Gotcha.
So...
It's a fairly safe bet?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So instead of being exactly at the bottom of the system, if I were to purely guess, it's probably three feet below it, or four feet below it.
Thus succeeding the two-foot separation.
Thus succeeding the two-foot required separation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would be relatively easy to check while construction's going on.
I think so. I mean, I think it's a reasonable safety check because it's the big drainage area on the site. If it doesn't work for any reason, then it's a problem for everyone.
What would the, pardon my ignorance, but what happens at that point if we find?
It's a real problem. I mean, the site is, you know, pretty intensively used, you know, there's not much land that isn't being used for something. You wouldn't want it under the gasoline dispensers, the septic system's out in front of the building, you know, I, you'd have to redesign the site somehow. You know, there are existing, in addition to the large main recharge facility, there are a few specialized recharge facilities, like one to catch the canopy water and stuff like that. I mean, I guess you could enlarge those. You could try shallow, the reason, actually, the system is reasonably deep below ground. The reason it's reasonably deep is they're trying to catch the very front of the site, which is lower, and then they've got to pitch the pipe down so the system, you know. So maybe you could alter that. Maybe you could put a little recharge facility in the front of the site and then raise that pipe so you could raise the system in back, you know. It would be some redesign to it. That's, you know, why I think we've been sort of advocating that a test pit be taken back there. But, you know, I think we agreed that if they submitted test pit data and it was consistent, and they did that, that we could, well, it's a waiver by the board. It's the board's decision ultimately whether you waive the requirement. But I don't see any compelling reason to think it's going to be violated right now.
Okay.
Can I make one comment on that?
Yes, sure.
As far as... When I read your letter going over the elevations, as you say, those elevations, your 191.7 is based on testing that was done, and then almost a four-foot groundwater correction is applied.
Correct.
And those tests are out near the front of the property by the septic system, I believe. I had Betsy pull Mr. DiMartino's subdivision plan, and one of the issues is our system is going out in the back of, all our drainage is out in this back corner. And currently, there exists on Mr. Martino's property, a massive detention pond right here, his roadway comes through, and then there's another one right next to it. Well, the bottom elevation of the detention pond, which is only 50 feet from our property line, is half a foot below what the bottom of our drainage basin is. And then on top of it, there is infiltration units in the bottom of his detention basin, which go down another five feet. So, I mean, not even 50 feet away from where we're proposing. There's a, there's a known groundwater elevation that's over six feet below what we're, what we have for our calculations.
So it's consistent with Tom saying it's probably pretty safe?
Yeah. If you get, if you drop the groundwater correction, the design elevation for these basins is down where our mounding calculations, you know.
And the reason I asked Evan to bring that up was, I didn't want you to think that we use, for a methodology, we use test pits 120 feet away. That's not what we did when we based the drainage. We took the most restrictive soil boring test from DiMartino's property, and we used the groundwater elevation 45 feet away, not 125 feet away. And that's how we came up with that drainage design.
But does it sound reasonable to you to just check during construction?
Yeah, no.
I think that's fairly reasonable because we've seen that before where, yeah, the groundwater is at this level here, 10 feet away, the groundwater level is here. So, you know, sometimes you have to be really careful. So it wouldn't hurt to just test it, you know, as he recommended, to test it while it's under construction.
I think folks are agreeable to that, right? I haven't heard any objections to that.
No. I have, there's just one point that, you know, under your previous drainage laws, we used to perform all the work and submit the results through engineers to Mr. Domi. Now, the work has to be done with oversight of the town engineer. So there's just additional fees since all the regulations were changed. And we just felt, you know, with all that data, that close, and all that, you know, information on groundwater, that, you know, Tom freely admits is a four-foot adjustment. And if you use the, you know, the historical data next door to that, 45 feet away, you could probably find it's much greater than that. We just thought good engineering practices, practice that it wasn't necessary, and that's really not an issue. But you guys feel otherwise, then we'll do that.
I think with all the drainage being dependent on that one location, it might be worth, you know, the extra assurance.
Yeah, my suggestion probably would be not to wait till the construction, and just to leave it open ended like that isn't really the right thing to do.
Tom, what, you said the tests were done in April?
Yes.
Last year? Or two years ago?
Well, I'm not sure because one of them says it was done in 2002. Another one said it was done in, where was it? 2002. The other one is done in 2004, but they have exactly the same groundwater adjustment, which would be reasonably unlikely two years apart. So I think one of them may be misdated, so they were done in either 2002 or 2004 would be my thought.
And you know, depending on the year, if it were a particularly dry winter or not dry winter, if that might have an impact. And, you know, you're saying it's within the high groundwater period time of year, but if it's an unusually dry winter, that adjustment may be appropriate, so.
Well, there is no documentation as to how this adjustment was determined, so I can't speak to, it was a proprietary thing, so I don't, I don't know. You are correct that season to season, groundwater won't always be at the same elevation even during the high groundwater season, but the supposition is, you know, statewide, at least under Title V, which does the most to the groundwater testing, they kind of respect the validity of the idea of the season. You know, you can get even more accurate by having monitoring wells and things like that. But we've got a little bit to play with though because it was a 3.8-foot adjustment, so even, even if it's, you know, wrong by half, we still end up with the two-foot separation of the bottom of the system, so it's...
I think what you're hearing is the board is trying to remain at least reasonably consistent here in terms of the regulation. So, you know, by not requiring you to bring equipment to the site and incur additional costs, you know, I think we're trying to include it as part of, you know, your construction, albeit at an early stage. And, you know, Mr. Houston and his resources, they're generally very available, so I don't think it's something that's going to take a whole lot of coordination ahead of time. I think we should just move forward, in my opinion.
You know, the, you know, the area is pretty consistent in terms of soils, but it is also classified, soil conservation folks says, as a disturbed area. Classified as U. Dorthens sandy. So, you know, sometimes when areas get disturbed, things happen that we don't understand. So, you know, is there some possibility that somebody dumped clay or something right under this? It's possible, unlikely, but possible. So I, I think it, well, I mean, we'd recommend that we do a test pit. It's not absolutely critical, but I mean, that's what we'd recommend, so.
Continue, anything else?
Yeah, well, we asked for rational formula pipe flow calcs. Actually, Evan just gave us hydrocade calcs, but they're again conservative. The pipes are about seven tenths full under the 100-year storm, and they really only have to be designed for the 25, so that's fine. And then there was just a detectable pad that should be added to the, to the wheelchair ramps, but that can just be shown on the asphalt drawing. It's a pretty minor thing, so.
Is that the little nubbed?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're for site impaired people. They're supposed to be able to feel the surface change, so. So that's it. I mean, I think we've wended our way through the comments here.
We're definitely going to want to hear from the design review board. Before we do that, because I think the focus will be, what's that?
Did you?
No, I have that. But before we, before we do that, I think maybe that'll focus more on the structure as opposed to some of the things that were brought up at the last meeting, like the islands that were proposed. So the question I have, because I haven't seen an updated plan, are those details in the updated plan yet, or is that something work that still needs to? So it's there, okay, so you have the islands in there?
The guard rail, the storms, the islands.
Okay, good, good.
Did we all get the design? I don't seem to have the design.
It's in, it's in the second status memorandum?
Part of Tom's, definitely?
Yeah, it's attached to Tom's.
It's attached to the back of the March 26th, the 25th.
The, I had asked you a couple of times about matching the grades. I still haven't seen anything on that.
We have no intention of matching the grades. We're asking for the wave as we're asking for the special permits not to do the construction.
If there's a, if there's a rational reason, I mean, if you can say, okay, this is why we can't do it and show it to us, then, then that's reasonable. But, you know, I asked twice, and all you've said both times, now it's the third time, we're just not going to do it. That's not what I want to hear. I want to hear you say, it's not rational because of this, and show it to us.
One was that you bring the grade down and you impact the septic system and the cover of the septic system. So that, that alone, you know, would be the reason not to touch the grade, just breakout issues. Second, the queuing, just going forward to change the grade would be to change the whole traffic.
How? How would changing the grade change the traffic flow?
So 202 down in here, and the grading up.
Here is 205.
And that area is actually higher, 201 and 205. Curbing is up around 200. In this corner of the grading, on the top of the curbs, almost 206. So there's a four-foot grade change between our curbing and the proposed frontage road area.
Well, when I looked at that plan last week, it was a two-foot difference.
It's 2051 here in the corner of the asphalt and 202 in the middle of DiMartino's road. So there's three feet. In order to cut this grade down, I would be cutting into the grade over the septic system. I'd have to build a wall here, or back here, I'd probably lose these parking spots to cut this grade down. I don't really know what the, what kind of percentage you could have and keep these parking spots, but I think three feet, you'd have to start cutting right about here, would you say?
Yeah, probably somewhere in that area.
You have to start cutting the grade here and then...
Run the drain.
Pick up two feet over 40 feet.
Plus, plus we'd be, whatever we regrade to go bring it down into Mr. DiMartino's, we'd then have to install extra drainage structures to keep all our drainage on-site.
I mean, I could build a wall here to hold this grade in place, so the traffic flow that I was talking about could continue this way, and then slope this gradley towards DiMartino's property. But in order to do that, I'd have to make sure I had the proper cover over the top of my septic system. And, you know, I just, it would look awful funny for something that may never be done. It would take these, I'd really have to take the wall, start here, and run the wall to here in order to accomplish what you're asking. So what I would do is tie the property up, so all these grades would stay the same, and then these, this grade, you'd slope down. And I'd have to put some serious work into the septic system, but I don't think it works with the septic system, and it would take these four spots away.
Well, we did have a question on those spots. I mean, there were a lot of issues that people brought up about those spots, so I'm not sure whether or not those spots are...
Well, it was pretty much landscaping was my recommendation.
Yeah.
And in fact, you know, there's an island, I could see the island was at it. Now, for me personally, I'll just speak for myself, you know, in addition to what the gentlemen have communicated, we did express some concerns about the original plan. It didn't have the, the ability to bypass for the drive-through that has, has since been added.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, which effectively pushes the property, the development, forward. Okay, so, you know, that's in conflict with a requirement that would, would make it more difficult to develop the front of the property.
Did that move the building, putting that bypass in? I thought you just went closer to the back, back line, yeah.
Yeah, but we also had to install a retainer wall that's much higher than what was originally proposed. The original wall was only going to be a foot and a half to two feet high, and now you're looking at a three and a half to four-foot-high wall.
And then the guard rail.
Yeah, plus a guard rail now.
And the other factor that stood out for me is that you're looking at one parcel before Sharon's app. So in effect, you know, any additional requirements, any additional cost, what have you, particularly if it detracts from the development in terms of the quality of the finished product, I think the benefit, even if it's just from a grade standpoint, is very limited because it's just one parcel before the frontage road would affect the end.
I only, I'm only asking because if they say it's because of the septic, it's because of this, it's because of that, just show us why it's because of the septic and what would happen to the septic if you had to grade it, or what would happen to, you know, just, just let us know what would happen. How many, how much coverage from the septic would you lose?
Right now, by the utility plan, you can see the outline of the septic system, which goes, which runs halfway through the front, proposed frontage road for Mr. DiMartino. Currently, the grade over the septic system on this end of the property is at the minimum, one-foot cover. This grade, you know, 15 feet into the property cannot go down.
And what's the distance between the two drives?
Between here and there?
Between the entrance into your site and the entrance into his site? Huh?
You mean these?
Center line, center line.
It's just 150 feet?
Yeah.
Because you were saying, well, why don't we call it an interim drive? How can it be an interim drive if there's no frontage road? So that can't be an interim drive.
That was a determination made by your consultant.
Well, determination is made by the board. So, I mean, that was a recommendation. I mean, if that's the only drive that you're anticipating, then that's not an interim drive because you've got no way to change it. An interim drive is temporary. That would not be a temporary drive.
Well, I believe if...
What are we doing here? I mean...
I don't know. I really don't.
I mean, how significant is the concern, Steve, really?
Well, I want to know if the, if the justification is rational. You know, I don't like people just coming in and saying, well, I don't want to put it in because I don't want to put it in. You know, I would rather someone say, it can't be done because of this.
I think that's what we did though, Steve.
Well...
We don't like the original explanation, but that explanation has been the same every minute. The septic system, the retainer wall, and the parking spots.
And the drainage.
And I think there's also other, you know, in the earlier meetings as well, um, we talked about the actual need for, uh, parking spaces, uh, and we hadn't got a determination necessarily for those. We had concerns about landscaping, which were valid, and I think Bob Nicodemus piped in, and that seemed to be an acceptable way of having split spots with trees in the middle, uh, non-invasive trees, I think, um, and I thought we got past this. I would hate to see us kind of regress from a decent site plan that I thought we've done a lot of work on, Tom, right through today, on something that, you know, again, may never come about.
If, if, um, if it doesn't, if it doesn't change the focus of Steve's concern, one thing that a frontage road is meant to do is keep people off the main street, um, you know, turning, you know, more often off the street than they have to. So, um, if there's the ability to park here and get to the next site just by walking over, um, then maybe, you know, maybe it would take care of part of the problem. Because what you don't want them to do is you don't want them to go out the driveway here, go down a hundred and fifty feet, and then go in the next driveway. So if there's a way to, to keep the car in one place, um, I don't know if that might address, if that might partially address the concern, is if we put in a, if we put in the sidewalk.
So the sidewalk will come, the DPW will install the sidewalk, so are you suggesting maybe some steps instead of, you know, having a continuous wall to have the ability for people to walk to the sidewalk? Not use the driveway, which would be inherently dangerous to, to use the driveway to the station? I mean, is that, that might be a practical.
Pedestrian access.
Look at pedestrian access.
So what you're saying is where those two slots out front, separated by a tree, would be, is actually put a couple granite slabs for steps down, or?
No, I'm saying they can do it any way they want, but I'm saying.
She's talking about off the side.
Bring, bring them.
No, that's what I mean.
Bring the pedestrians to the next site.
Down to you goes, rather than getting into excavation and potentially impacting the entire site.
Well, we can walk.
I think it's a reasonable compromise to go for pedestrian access from the site, to the adjacent site.
Between the sites.
We'll hear from the design review board, because, I mean, they have some expertise in this, obviously, but, you know, I'm thinking the safest approach is to have access to the sidewalk, because someday, when Mr. Dino Martino's property is, you know, being utilized, I mean, there's gonna be cars, you know, that are gonna be in that parking lot, as opposed to just being able to step down from this parking lot onto a sidewalk. I don't know in terms of how it would be done, in terms of the aesthetics and such, but I'm sure it could be done nicely, I would think.
There's two routes you're speaking of. You're, you're speaking of the, those that, those that are on the sidewalk, probably coming off of Sharon, and, um, speaking of those that are, are, um, taking advantages of the services at this site, that may wanna walk from, you know, from the building or their car to the next site. So they may have, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know the distances, if you, if there's a, if there's a second, um, internal connection between the two sites. You know, so the guys next door can come get sodas.
Just one point, I think if, whatever pedestrian access you do, it's gonna have to be accessible. So I don't think you can do steps.
You can do, you can do one accessible route.
Well, the sidewalk would satisfy an accessible route.
How is the sidewalk gonna be able to connect to the sites if they're four feet apart?
Yeah, no kidding.
What do you mean?
They need to connect.
How are they gonna grade it if we can't grade it?
Well, there's gonna be wall.
No, there's gonna be a sidewalk out front.
The wall is being built to, to accommodate the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's land put aside out front that DPW said they were going to do the sidewalk.
They need to have feet between property line and the edge of the pavement.
So I think Andrew's comment then is that connecting, if you're up high at these parking spots, and there's a wall, and then a sidewalk lower, there's an accessible route, if you started, you know, here and travel along the accessible path, if you're not.
Ambigatory?
Yeah, then you could come here, and maybe there's a set of stairs somewhere that can connect you from that elevation down the wall.
A set of stairs would be, I think she's saying to have it off the side where the frontage road would be.
Go into the front.
Al made a suggestion, since he has to build the wall anyways, build the steps right into the wall, since the wall has to be built anyways.
Yeah, that might be, I understand what you're saying.
The issue is that trying to get us, we can form our property to Mr. Di Martino's plan, and we did not have Mr. Di Martino, have him build that access road up about three feet in grade where it hits our property line.
But you can match his grade, but with steps, not.
Well, if that's, if that's a way to set, settle it, rather than even looking back into ancient history of it, what's there is there, so how do we get to finding a way?
I think the steps would work.
Steve?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said, it's a reasonable compromise. I just wanna make sure that.
And the walls.
Yeah, so, I mean, so I can, you know, so the person can see them.
Right, so if they.
In that corner.
The rest is gonna be grass, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Landscaping.
Yeah.
Maybe put a couple flagstones down or something.
Okay.
So you could put a, while you're building the wall, just build, there'll probably be three, three steps.
So, uh, Al, are you saying in the corner there where it's open, where the parking ends, the edge of the parking, have it?
You know, I don't, I'd like to take a look at it, but, you know, either the wall's gonna, uh, it's gonna come down like this, you know, so maybe in here, or maybe in here, and you walk up like that.
I mean, if you go into the right, which is the logical direction, it would probably be closer to that side.
I mean, just thinking if you're gonna walk, either way, you're gonna have to walk through the drive-through, so.
Just minimize that.
I just pick the best spot with the grade, you know, to minimize the amount of steps.
Design review board, I mean, any thoughts on that, in terms of how that would mesh with what you've come up with?
The design review board didn't have a site plan last night to look at. It arrived, but didn't get distributed, so we didn't know about it. We did review the building, and we did make recommendations based on a meeting last night, which we created a letter for, uh, but the issue of pedestrian access was not something we could even begin to address, because we didn't have a site plan.
We can make it a performance standard, though.
True. Okay, so in terms of the rise and the run, in terms of how, how many feet to the edge of pavement, and what the elevation is that we have to overcome, I mean, what approximately does that look like?
Typical step rise, where I think it's seven and a half inches, and it's a foot deep, so.
But in terms of the property? You know, when the sidewalk ultimately?
Three, three feet is three or four steps.
Right.
Okay, so it's three feet, and in terms of the, just the distance, you know, 'cause there was some.
Well, if there were four steps, it'd be four feet, um, back.
Okay.
One foot depth, seven inches up.
And the proximity from the edge, the inside edge of the future sidewalk and the edge of the asphalt, where Mr. Quagliari would be likely to, how many feet are we talking?
Well, it looks like about a five-foot sidewalk and, uh, maybe a three and a half-foot grass strip, or something like that. The, the intent is, I think, that the sidewalk is placed at the toe of the wall, which is, uh, pretty close to the property line.
It's about two oh two, right, right in the middle of the wall.
Thirty feet, Tom, is this driveway opening is twenty-four?
Yeah.
Actually.
Oh, that's what he's asking, I'm sorry.
I think he's looking that distance.
Two oh one now currently exists down at the bottom, on Mr. Di Martino's property.
Oh, that's doable.
And our elevation up in here is two oh five, actually, top of current is two oh six.
And how many feet in this, in the horizontal?
You'd break the curb for the step, though.
In here, you're looking at, um, probably it's only about ten feet.
Ten feet from the edge of the pavement to what will be the inside edge of the sidewalk in the future, is that?
Well, we're not, the sidewalk's going in here. Mr. Di Martino has no sidewalk here, so the question is, are you talking about steps going out onto that street, or are you talking about steps going down to the frontage road?
Well, I personally was talking about the street, because ultimately, I mean, somebody would be walking into a parking lot, I guess, I mean, I guess that's okay, um, as opposed to walking onto a sidewalk, but.
Yeah, but sort of dumping them into the parking lot, the way it happens here, between town hall and, and Walgreens. You know how there's this, you know how there's an inside set of stairs, just to drop off, just so you cut, you don't have to go all the way down to the sidewalk if you're going to the interior building.
I, I would say the best part for the steps would be right here.
Yeah, that's where I thought it would be reasonable. Yeah, I thought that that would be the best place, too.
Bring them right off there, into the back of the aisle.
I think that's what people would.
Just put like three steps, three steps or whatever.
Shortest distance, straight line mentality.
But he, but he wants to make it.
On this, on my property.
On your property.
Right.
I mean, technically, based on Mr. Di Martino's approved plan, the grade in here is supposed to be two feet higher, but, or at least a foot, I know.
I'm just not confident on this grade in here, because it's not matching up with what's on the approved plan.
Oh, we think it's approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's approved and then there's asphalt.
Where I can control what I build out front. I'm, I'm willing to do it over here, it's just I don't have control of the grades on his property.
Well, you're gonna do it in the field anyways. You're gonna go from what's on the ground to, up to your, up to your known grade.
It's just a time, who, who finishes first. I don't know. I'll do it, put it wherever you want.
I'll bet you'll be finished first.
Yeah, really. Are you really, you really questioning that?
I think we can work through that.
But the idea is getting it out the frontage road.
Yeah.
So there'll be some connectivity between the two sites.
What do you, what do you think, Steve?
Yeah, I, I said that's a reasonable compromise to get the, at least pedestrian connection.
So in terms of your concern about the elevation, that would address it sufficiently?
Well, then, yeah, yeah, I think so.
So other items, basically what the board has is, um, what's called a draft decision, which just helps us frame the questions and concerns, so there's only a couple more, really, that, uh, we need to discuss.
Get this?
The storm scepter, I appreciate you stepping up, and you said you'd be willing to install, I'm not sure, is that on the plan? Okay.
Yeah, it's on the plan.
And there was some question about, um, lighting.
We added the lighting.
Added the lighting.
Yeah, with the guard rail, we're putting the islands on the parking lot, providing extra landscaping, both along the down-the-street side, but in the islands and around the outside of those parking lots.
And, uh, there is a, a comment relative to the delivery of the gasoline, um, that language to the extent that if it is an issue, that the planning board can require that it take place during the day. Of course, it has to be done safely in management plan and those types of things, but, um, not from the get-go, and this is open for discussion for the board, and this is a public hearing, but not necessarily from the get-go requiring that the fuel deliveries take place during the, during the daytime, allowing them to take place, um, in the evening. But if that's an issue in terms of the neighbors, noise, what have you, then, you know, that's something that the board would, um, enforce in the future.
From the original comment from, uh, Tom's office about the deliveries, um, there is on one of the plans, I believe it's a landscaping plan, that shows the position of the truck, there's a note on there that all deliveries are to be nighttime deliveries, which was a recommendation I took back at the very first meeting. So that language has always, already been added to the plan.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that as long as that's not a problem in terms of noise, I don't know if they need to run the tractor and how loud that, that would be, hopefully it's not too loud. I mean, you do have some homes that are not too far up, up the road, so, um, so, I mean, we could just leave that language in there, that that might be something that we need to discuss if it were to, you know, become an issue in the future. And, you know, I guess with that, you know, this being a public hearing, I see, you know, Ms. Whitney's here this evening, appreciate you coming.
Can we change that, uh, denied to an approved on the drainage?
Where are you at?
Yeah.
That's in effect, that's in effect what we did tonight, the conversation tonight. That's what we did, subject to, you know, when you begin construction, you know, doing a test pit, basically.
And then the same with, uh, number two on the access pedestrian, it says grading at the site, ensure the frontage road is feasible. That will be changed to steps to the adjacent property?
Correct, correct. I don't wanna speak for the rest of the members, that's my understanding, correct? Every step addresses your concern, right, Steve?
Yeah, oh, well, this one is, is a different issue, though. This is nothing, number two, the one he's talking about, that's a different issue. That's, that has nothing to do with, um, the, the whole frontage road issue.
Yeah, and I thought we were asking for a waiver, so I didn't understand why two was there.
This is not building the sidewalk in the front.
Okay, the sidewalk, uh, the DPW, based on the last information I have, will construct the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But the wall needs to be installed, and the grading needs to be consistent.
He's talking about number two.
That's my memory on it also, yeah.
Contingent of the sidewalk, um, that's, that's his requirement.
And they don't, they have, uh, another source of funding?
Well.
That's what he said.
But it says, it says that.
He's looking at number two, which is a different issue.
It says that it's a future frontage road connection is feasible, not the sidewalk.
Right, and in.
Three is the sidewalk.
And in Gino's opening page of factual background, the last sentence, a factual background paragraph is a special permit not to construct the frontage road is being requested from the planning board, but then later in the document, he's saying that we will make a future frontage road feasible, so it's, it's contradictory.
Well, it, it seems kind of funny, because we never have sidewalks along frontage roads, so it's.
This is not.
The sidewalk is three, this is two.
Right, I'm looking at two, and it says sidewalks along frontage, we don't.
No, 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 we're looking at the.
Yeah, we're on special conditions of approval.
We're all on the same page?
Let me just, let me just ask, rather than get tripped up here by all of us, just so we make sure we're all on the same page. So what we're saying is, if, you know, the steps are provided for the access to the adjacent property, that the grade is not a concern of any of the members of the board, correct? In terms of the grade?
Right.
Okay, and then, in terms of the sidewalk, you know, the wall would be installed, and it would be done so that it's consistent with Bob McGee's vision of having a contiguous sidewalk. So do we all agree that that is, is what, what will be done, right?
That's what two speaks to.
So, in terms of any grading, help me understand what grading issues exist at that point, because I thought.
I think the grading has to do with where the.
It's eight.
Where the stone is, where the stone wall is, it has to be graded out there so the sidewalk can be constructed. That's.
And, but that's what the wall is for.
Right.
And what he, what the, basically, I think what number three, and this is where the confusion's come in, number three is talking about leaving a nice flat level surface, so McGee can come in and put his sidewalk on it.
In the front of the property, using the word frontage.
Along the frontage, not the frontage road.
Not the frontage road, but the front of the property.
So they.
The question is on item number two.
But it says it along the front of the property.
The waiver request, number two.
Yeah, waiver request.
Sidewalk along the.
Oh, see, I'm on specific conditions of approval, number two.
Take that out.
Okay.
He used the word frontage instead of front of property, is that?
Yeah, that's what's throwing people off.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Gino doesn't get twosies off anymore.
The applicant's question is on page, yeah. The applicant's question is on page three.
Yes.
Under specific conditions, access pedestrian and vehicular circulation, item number two speaks to the fact that he still needs to make a frontage road feasible.
Yes.
That's what's in conflict with the special permit.
That's what we've changed.
Yes.
We've said pedestrian access will be accessible.
You've crossed that hurdle, you wanna, you don't wanna cross it.
See, Michelle and I were on page three, you guys were on page two.
Well, he started over on the, the waiver request, that's why we were still there.
All right, well, we were, we were lost.
All right, we're good. I think we're on the same page.
Literally.
So, can we hear from the design review board as far as, uh, structure, and if there's anything else you, you folks would like to share?
So the design review board had a meeting last night with the applicant. We, uh, went over revised building image issues, um, and we're comfortable with that in a letter that we submitted to the planning board. We, uh. We did not have a site plan with the new landscaping, so we had a discussion about it. And in the last paragraph of the letter we submitted, we are looking to have a tree in the island of the front two parking spaces. We understand that it has to be a non-invasive root system. If we need to, we can find such a loca-, such a plant material, we didn't discuss how to go about that last night. But in any event, the only remaining issues which we think can be resolved in the so-called documents that are submitted for signature, there were no dimensions on the building images that we looked at. And we would like to have those dimensions for future reference. Number two, a standard procedure that the DRB would like to have is samples of all of the color elements that they listed on their elevation sheet, so that we can match that and we caveat that, that the canopy for the filling station is listed as parchment, which sounds good, we'd like to see the color. If it turns out to be bright white, we might have a problem with that. So we're just commenting with, because we didn't have all the information, we were sort of holding our options open. This can all be closed out during the, the final documents being submitted for signature, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where we're at, we did talk about these issues last night and I did try and transcribe them in the letter.
So Bob, if we conditioned the color samples, the dimensions and the tree choices as part of the, would that satisfy you guys?
I had a couple of questions, we had talked last meeting about also reviewing the color of the retaining wall, which is not one of the materials of the building, and I didn't know if you wanted to consider that as part of your.
We, we didn't get into that because we didn't have a site plan to talk to last night. We were told at the meeting by the applicants here, that they were quote, "matching the retaining wall materials of an adjacent property" that, that already was there. So we haven't actually had a chance to look at that to see what that means, but that sounded like a rational approach.
We, we took the, the wall from Di Ma-, excuse me, we took the wall from Di Martino's property that runs this wall right here.
Which is not built yet.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
Could be approval on this, and we just replicated it first.
And there is a sample in Di Martino's file?
Yeah.
As far as I know, but basically there's a cut sheet showing the type of wall.
So I think just in the context of all the other palette of colors they're using in the building design, it just might be one more thing, rather than matching something on a different site, even though it's adjacent to it, in the context of colors, I think it'd be good for you guys to weigh in on how it, how it's feeding into the scheme. My other question was on, you know, the suggestion for additional, for the tree is, is one thing, I understand that, but there's also, you know, a suggestion for just more shrubs, and we kind of say the same thing, additional planting. Are we requiring any kind of an actual landscape plan that you guys review prior to?
Well, there is an actual landscape plan, we just didn't have a copy of it last night.
So are we requiring, for you to review an actual landscape plan as a condition as well?
Well, we can say for review and approval, we can say you have to give us more and you have to have it approved.
Yeah, we, we didn't have that to go on last night, so for your information, it, it, we, we did throw a sketch on the wall in case we didn't have a plan, so we knew sort of where we were heading.
So I think one of the objectives tonight will be to try to close the public hearing. So if there's any items that rise to a level where they could be insurmountable, and I don't think, I've heard any, I think we've worked through them, but we'll get to that point where we'd like to close the public hearing. So it'd be an opportune time, if there are any concerns that rise to that level, now would be the time. But let, Bob, if you've got any further comments?
No, I think our comments really, as I tried to say, is that we didn't have the full drawing, so we sort of extended our reach out there saying that we, we still believe that one more tree is not a big deal in each of the two parking islands, and that, that if the landscape plan has more landscape on it than we had anything to look at, then that might remediate. You know, we were looking at the time for some possible landscaping that would mitigate the, the parking areas. And it looks like, what I'm seeing here, they're starting to do that, we didn't have that last night to relate to.
So is the board comfortable with the landscaping, use Steve's words, review and approve on the landscaping plan as part of their final?
As I say, this plan, the only thing we're asking for is that we want a tree in, in the parking lot island.
And that's something you guys can do?
And if they can't, we'll, we'll give it to them because we know it exists, the tree, yeah. We have a landscape architect that has told us he's got the documentation and can prove what you need. In case you can't give it to us, we'll give it to you.
But Bob, I think you're gonna give him the tree. I think you're actually gonna give him the tree.
Pick one now.
I don't know what we're gonna do with the budget.
Be a small one, even a little pot. Remember the pots, we talked about that at the last meeting, we'll give you a few in pots.
Those are the forest trees?
Ms. Whitney.
Hi, thank you very much.
Give you a microphone.
Microphone. Evan, microphone. Pass that back, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, and of course, to quote you, Jeff, the aesthetic quality of the finished product is what I'm very, very interested in. And I had seen Paul from the design review board earlier at a history meeting, and so I was aware that some good changes or some modifications have taken place. I'm thrilled about the continuous sidewalks and the pedestrian access discussion sounds very encouraging. So I just want a country look to Route 1A. The difference between a country and city is very important to me, and it sounds like we're making good progress. So I really appreciate some very detailed discussion, thank you.
She's gonna be your loyal customer, most loyal customer.
Yeah.
Yes, probably.
I'll tell you after the hysterical commission.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, right.
That's another matter.
So I have a great, great deal of respect for the DRB and all the boards in North Florida. And ultimately, the design of the building and landscaping ends up being either approved or not by the design review board, not every town has one. I think we should be proud that we care enough about what goes up in our town to have such hard-working work.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Anything else from the DRB, anything else you want to add?
Well, it's in our letter that we just want the elevation confirmation of our assumptions because we, we had a very quick meeting last night and, as I say, the documents we got were very supportive of what we were heading for, but we didn't have everything shown that we wanted, we don't think that they were missing, we just think that we needed a more updated drawing.
Members of the board?
I think, I think I heard in this special condition six, it says additional plantings, and that language is, is really generic, I think I heard what additional plantings people are speaking of tonight.
I don't know that we had the landscaping plan for the last meeting, so now.
Well, we've got one right here, now, do we want to look?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, because I, I mean, additional plantings can be easily complied with without meeting the, probably intent.
Is there a page on that one? Can you just pause it so that the camera can get it, Evan, if you don't mind? This is our board.
Bob, did you want to see it? This is what you didn't see the other night?
So he was talking about putting a tree in these, which is a good idea. Yep, let's soften it. Yeah, you don't want anything blocking the sign.
Where's the sign? Just one comment, I would think maybe the giant arborvitae aren't appropriate plant selection here because they're gonna create a big line to kind of hide the site, so.
Yeah, good point.
We want a lower shrub there.
Where, where's the giant?
They're along the, the street side of both of these banks and parking here.
So you want to look at that symbol down here for, for the arborvitae?
No.
Can you see, can you see where the arborvitae is?
Oh.
They're right, they're right along the edges, the end of the.
I'm saying the arborvitae down here, is there? Instead of into the middle. Oh, there it is, yeah.
Sixteen.
At the parking?
Yeah.
Well, what's little giant, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, it grows to a pretty decent height.
Well, yeah, but the problem with arborvitae is that they get to a certain height and then they split and they fall apart. So that, that's, you know, not a good one if you don't want, if you want low maintenance evergreens out here because arborvitae are notorious for getting really tall and then when it snows, they all split and fall apart.
Not only that, but they grow twenty, thirty feet tall.
Yeah, you weren't taking short.
Yeah, you may want to rethink that one.
Oh, the shrubs?
Yeah, those are shrubs, those are not trees.
Well, it says giant arborvitae.
Little giants.
Little giant arborvitae, yeah.
Four to five feet high.
Does it say little giant?
Yeah, it says little giant, oh, okay. I thought those are some poems, little giant.
That's a height of four to five feet, that's why, they can create a nice hedge row, which is what I was looking for.
In front of the parking spots.
If they had more landscape.
And it's good because the headlights won't shine.
In between.
In between the trees in this plant.
And this has, this has shrub on the, right where we, where, right where you want it, when you're on the, when you're on the sidewalk, you won't be looking at the bumpers of the cars.
Yep.
So what do you have for distance here, what's that distance for the sidewalk?
That's about eight, eight and a half feet.
Okay, so, oh, so you're putting, you're putting the wall.
The wall's going on that block.
Yeah.
And I can make the steps look nice if I can blend them into the wall, yeah.
We, we were talking about putting them down here, though.
Yeah.
What's this thing here now? This is where you're not parking, right?
It's just striping, right?
That's just striping, yeah.
What, you, you think that you might have the grade to do it there?
I don't control that tree line he's putting in though, but, you know, you'd be walking right into trees.
Why wouldn't you consider putting it here?
Because we're, we're, this, when you're, when you're standing here and you want to get over there.
Yeah.
You're gonna take the shortest way.
Yeah, people will want to go the shortest way.
Hey, remember, you're gonna have people that are walking in this direction that may not be parking at all, you know, that they'd be able to, without going in through a parking lot.
And they're gonna, they're gonna have to jump over a four-foot-high wall here.
Oh, is it a four-foot-high wall?
Well, yeah, it's right here.
He also has a fence, I think.
Oh, I didn't real-, I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was a wall there.
It might be cleaner just to keep it, keep it between the town and Mr. Quaglieri rather than.
I was just thinking that if other people besides his property walk up the sidewalk, then they'd want to come like that instead of cutting down his driveway.
We're having, no, that, Betsy, we're having trouble between the sidewalk that goes down on a, yeah, yeah, Betsy. I'm talking to, I'm talking to Ms., Ms. Pondville. We're talking about a sidewalk coming in on the, on the corner of the property, going up to his parking lot from the sidewalk on Dedham Street, or having the sidewalk be further interior to the site, so that you never go, you never go out to Dedham Street.
You're asking me?
I'm one, I'm, know that you're gonna be walking in this area, so I'm wondering where you're more likely to walk.
Well.
Do you want to see where we're talking about?
Yeah, I probably.
I think the, I think the trees and the grade make all the difference, but, yeah.
Oh, 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 I moved it, no, 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 no. There, we're talking about either connecting, there's, there's another development here.
Right, Hugo.
So we're talking about having steps come down this way.
Right.
Because this is where we're talking about the frontage road is supposed to be, because he has his frontage road right here.
Okay.
So to put pedestrian access this way to connect to this.
Yes.
Or to have it come out this way and connect to the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
That's what she's asking you.
So Andrea, you want to know if I personally, not that it's my decision, but.
This is gonna.
I know.
But you're the one who's gonna do it.
Coming this way? That's what, we're, we, we're not scientists here, we're talking about whether or not it's more likely that people are gonna be walking along this sidewalk going this way, or they're gonna be walking in here going that way, that's all.
Could it be reviewed in the field?
Makes sense to me that they'd be going this way. Goes with Jeff.
The sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, easy.
I don't know if that helps.
So to bring it here, bring it up here, right?
It does because Jeff suggested it and the developers said it'd be easier to do.
Yeah, the only thing, maybe we should leave a little flexibility, it, it's hard to design something unless you actually have tried to design it. So I think maybe you could indicate the board's preference, but allow a little bit of flexibility in terms of setting it in the fields.
Okay, so we'll, we can craft some language.
And they've eliminated all this landscaping that used to be here. There used to be landscaping all along the front.
What was all that, is there a key for that?
I mean, they'll get the plan, I don't know, I'm just saying it's not there now.
We, but I think we agree, there's quite a bit there, right, I mean, that's not an issue, we're not saying that's an issue, it's changed, right? It's just, it's just different.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's more here and less out here.
Yeah.
And it's lawn in between.
Right, so there's green, green belt.
It works to have it better, I think it works better to have, be by the cars.
So, I guess with.
Tree in the islands.
Look to my, my colleagues here, we'll be ready for a motion to close the public hearing.
This whole conversation started on whether or not we were changing, how we were changing special condition six. So after recognizing this landscape plan the way it is now, does special condition six just get two trees added to the islands?
Is it two trees on each island or one tree on each island?
And which one's the island?
Well, we can just, we can close the public hearing, but make it contingent on, you know, an acceptable landscape plan, including the stairway, you know, stairway access to sidewalk on Dedham Street, okay? Something like that.
I thought that's what we suggested, you know, with Bob earlier, so.
Yeah, so that'll just be part of the decision when it's drafted, right?
So the landscape plan and the three other conditions that we discussed earlier from your letter, Bob, right? Right, I think that catches all.
We want the building issue's dimension and we want the color section.
Samples, dimensions, what was the third thing on here?
Well, we can still close the hearing and all that stuff will get picked up in the decision.
Tree.
The tree's in the parking lot.
Right, right.
And the entire landscaping plan would be subject to review by the side committee.
Right.
That's the best way to do it.
Okay, Peter, so I think you're ready to make.
I make a motion to close the hearing, subject to the four outstanding conditions brought up by the design review board, which are, excuse me, Bob, building dimensions, the color schemes, the tree plantings for the islands, and the entire landscaping. Did I forget anything, guys? You guys can live with this?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're gonna hit the head.
Very nice.
Thank you. You may be pumping fuel here sooner than you think.
Did I, the test pits, the test pits were already included.
Okay.
Well, that'll be in the decision.
It wasn't in the motion.
It, it can be in the decision, we just have to put it in.
Yeah, the stairs aren't in the motion either.
Right.
Right.
Decision, so, it'll all be picked up.
Okay.
Waver five and condition of approval two under the access need to be updated.
It's.
Yeah.
Waiver six to, waiver eight. Waiver six to, waiver eight.
Could I ask a question? Will there actually be another design review board meeting for just for others or?
Yeah, because they're gonna be conditions of the, the approval.
Then now the review, the design review board will have to.
Yeah, they, they don't necessarily coordinate it through the planning board, you know, they're coordinated directly with the developer. So, um, and we, we can certainly let them know if they're interested.
Well, I sort of, I asked, you know, I tried to sign up for notifications and I never got there anymore.
Come on, we get your new seat there.
I'll call you and you can walk me through it.
Okay, um, it's almost nine PM, the next item of business was to be a discussion regarding lot releases for Fernridge Estates. And, um, I spoke with, uh, the developer, I, as well as, uh, Mr. McGee and Betsy this afternoon. And, um, that business will be postponed until April eleventh.
Does that have something to do with the wear and all that?
Yeah, uh, so, Betsy is going to send something out, but, um, I have spoken with the developer, Mr. McGee, and Mr. Houston about, uh, having a meeting to try to get on the same page. I know I'm just one member of the board, but just to try to get to some reasonable place, so when the applicant comes before the board, that the applicant is, um, hopefully aligned with the board. But we certainly would like him to be more aligned with Bob McGee, because the things that are at issue right now involve the off-site mitigation, which is under the DPW, um, control, you know, their oversight, if you will. So, you know, there are some remaining issues to be discussed. And so rather than tie up the entire board, the feeling was have a preliminary discussion and approach the board on April eleventh. So, um, Betsy's gonna send out an email to everyone, eleven thirty AM on Thursday, most likely here in Town Hall. So, you know, it's an open meeting. So if, I know it's difficult for many of you with, um, you know, your, uh, your jobs that, that you have and your schedules to, to participate in that, but, um, but if you can, you're certainly welcome.
Evan, is that yours?
That's one of yours.
Oh, it's yours, Ben, sorry.
Thank you.
I suspect you have absolutely no, um, I'm sure that you, you know exactly how the board feels.
This is about Fernridge?
Yeah. You, you, our position has been, we've been, we've been talking about it for a number, a number of different discussions, and aren't you, you, don't you feel pretty confident that you've got a sense of everybody but Michelle, who was not part of the discussions?
I do, and, you know, given the, the history with this particular applicant, you know, nothing has been easy.
Right.
Um, and this, you know, maybe, you know, we may have another difficult situation to contend with, I don't know. I guess we'll, we'll find out on, on Thursday.
But you, but you know the position, you know the position, um, that you're representing or would need to modify if you, if you chose to do anything different.
Yeah, I mean, I think just in general, I mean, our role collectively is to protect the interests of the town, the residents of the town.
And the decision.
And the, and the decision, and, um, and, you know, some of the things that we do along those lines are pretty clear, that it's part of our role. And, um, you know, decisions, you can only capture so much information in a decision. And some of it, uh, some of the things that the planning board does, uh, probably, uh, fall under the broad, broad category, category of accepted practice, you know, as opposed to something that can specifically, you can't outline every detail in a decision. So, that's where the focus of the conversation might be in terms of what the town's, uh, opinion is as far as the decision versus what the developer's opinion is on that decision and trying to see if we can get to the same place. And, I mean, just because I may feel we get to that place, doesn't mean that the full board would agree either. So I'll, I'll make that very clear, that I'm just one person. But it seemed to make sense to try to get folks together and see if we can, you know, be proactive and moving forward, so. Any other questions about, about that? Okay, so that business will, uh, most likely take place on April eleventh. Uh, so the next item of business, which was scheduled for eight thirty, we're about thirty minutes behind, was a discussion regarding the cottage car wash, um, to be located at thirty-six Pine Street. Uh, there've been some, uh, concerns, some problems as far as, uh, access to the property egress relative to an easement that was never filed, um, involving adjacent property. So, the applicant has, uh, presented an alternative strategy for access egress to the future car wash. So, very much look forward to, uh, having that conversation. Gentlemen, Mr. Bravens, thank, thank you for coming, good to see you. Welcome. So once, uh, once you folks are set up, what we'll wanna do is just make sure that everyone is using the, the microphone for, not so much, you know, for us or the audience, but it's for the folks of cable access. How you doing, Rick?
Thanks.
Evening.
All set? Okay.
Good evening, uh, my name's Joseph Mitchell Junior. I am an attorney with an office in Adabow, and I represent Cottage Car Wash. And we are here tonight proposing a, what we wish to be considered a minor modification to the, uh, site plan for, regarding the access to my client's property. I think most of you probably are aware of the situation right now. Uh, my client has been acting in good faith. He's been trying to comply with every, every request that's been made of him. He's at a stage right now where he's, he needs to proceed with the project. He has some significant financing, uh, concerns. When we did the refinance and got the construction loan, they're rather onerous terms. And he has to start the process, so the, this lender is getting a little jittery and is, uh, what, what my client's worried about is that they're, they're gonna yank the funding. So, I think what you, a, as you know, we've, uh, we ran into a problem with accessing the property. There was, Norfolk has the frontage road down on this one A, one fifteen corridor. Right now, we find ourselves without access to the site. The, a budding owner, Robert Roy, who owns that Joffrein piece, has been, let's say, less cooperative with our request to provide what we, what we felt he was obligated to provide. And this was notwithstanding the fact that in two thousand, when he, uh, applied for and received a special permit, it was conditioned on him giving the future developer, which is Cottage Car Wash, access to that frontage road easement. Now, there's a lot of different ways, I guess, we could approach it. And we've chosen to do this as a, as what we consider to be a reasonable alternative. Uh, every, all of the other owners down there do have direct access to their properties. The fact that Mr., Mr. Roy has chosen not to be cooperative, uh, obviously, he could lend it, lend itself to a lawsuit. We could end up in Superior Court, asking a judge in Superior Court to compel him to issue the required easement. But then we're subjecting my client to the, the morass of litigation to Superior Court and getting bogged down. He would be winning a battle to lose the war at that point, that was our determination. So, we would, came up with this alternative, I can turn it over to Rick Gudrow, who has the specifics of it.
Thank you, Larry, thank you.
Good evening, Rick Gudrow with United Consultants. And what we have here, uh, is an eleven by seventeen sketch that everyone has with a colored up version here at, uh, at full scale. And what we did was we took and highlighted in a darker gray the original proposed paved surfaces of the site, impervious surfaces, building being in red here and the green being the landscaping area. And what the current proposal consists of is eliminating this pavement section here, as it would no longer be necessary to tie into the frontage road on the Joffrein property and construct this small section here out into the one fifteen right away to provide access to the property. This allows for a relatively consistent queuing area that was originally proposed. The site access and flow, uh, has continued generally from what we had proposed originally. We are adding, and we've provided it here on the, the schedule, approximately five hundred square feet of additional pavement, and then the reduction of the small amount that we'd be relocating there. The grade in this area is relatively flat from the existing driveway to the, uh, existing roadway. So the transition would be relatively smooth. So that's what we're proposing. I have provided centerline distance offsets from the centerline throat and the centerline of Valley Street to the proposed driveway, as well as the distances from the centerline of the proposed driveway to the Joffrein driveway.
How about the, um, the centerline of the other part of Valley Road?
Which part?
Because it, it, Valley splits and it's got two sections.
Not anymore.
No.
Oh, they redid Valley Street.
I thought that that had, still had that crazy configuration there.
This reflects.
With an island in the middle. I think it disappeared with the Route one fifteen project.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So that you have to come to a complete stop.
Yeah.
So the distance between the drives is the eighty-fourth dimension, is that right?
Correct.
If you Google or Bing it, it still shows the split. Oh, okay.
But. It's not there anymore.
Right.
See some pictures there, does it show any?
I'm just looking.
And, no, you were right.
Yeah, these are photos from prior meetings that I, I had in my files that I took. So, so in terms of the location, uh, with reference to the tree cluster and such, you'd be talking about the area between the tree cluster and the Joffrein, Joffrein driveway, you wouldn't be disturbing.
It would be right there, right where the tree cluster is, I believe, right? Right here.
Not sure. Yeah, you got a few, you get this one as well, that might help you.
Yeah, these are recent pictures because the piles are there. I would say.
Yeah, Tom Houston took those, he took those.
Nice job, Tom.
Thank you.
Say it would be in that vicinity there where that slight opening is, maybe a little closer this way. You know, that, that opening there, that vicinity there. Keep in mind, those trees begin at about the, just before the property line. So we'd be, you know, down a little distance from that, to the edge of it.
Okay, so the property line is where the hay bales are now.
Correct. You were able to see those, the compost sock?
Uh, I think just barely, yeah, you can see them here. I, uh, thank.
Yep.
Rick, how close is it to the, the little, uh, I think you have a metal plate or something there right now on site? Or maybe it's just a, uh, a strip, a gr, a stone strip or something?
Correct. I'd say forty feet or so closer to this side of the property, Joffrein side.
Okay.
Roughly.
Well, I know that there's a plan for a building on Valley Street, right on the corner. Now, um, it looks to me as though there's gonna be a lot of traffic dumping into a really small area there. Did you get that email today that, that showed you the office building that's going in right across the street?
I couldn't give up on the emails today, I might have.
Oh, okay. We're a lot of emails this week.
I did not have a chance to review it. I, I think that's, you know, I first of all wanna say that it fully support, you know, however we can get you guys to, to get the all of that.
Right.
I think that's all our in, intent, and that's what we wanna see for you. I think the only thing I would probably direct the question to you, Tom, is there any investigation? I know this is all pretty new in terms of just traffic safety. And, you know, just because of the relative close proximity of the drives and the offset from Valley, just, you know, we just wanna make sure we're not creating an unsafe situation. We want you going, we want you doing business, we want you there, we just don't wanna jeopardize people's safety.
In this instance, I did disagree with Rick's fundamental design. And I mentioned that I'd, uh, discuss it here at the board meeting. Clearly, you know, we don't wanna hold things up, we'd like to help Mr. Bravens to the degree that we can. But, um, my recommendation would be that the site entrance should be as close to opposite Valley Street as you can, uh, make it. I realize there's a bit of a grade issue there. And he probably gets two or three more cars in queue doing this than, than coming out.
Doing this, meaning what?
Uh, doing the proposal as opposed to having the entrance opposite, uh, Valley Street. But the concern is fundamentally, and the reason we have driveway offsets and all that type of thing in the rules and regs, the basic premise of safe roadway design, whether it's a street like this, or Route one, or whatever, it's simplifying the driving function. You're supposed to have one decision at a time. So, if you have an intersection here already, putting another approach to it, it's kind of the same decision place. The driver passing through understands that there may be cars approaching from either direction, and that's conventional. The concern here is that the driveway location is so close to Valley Street. You get a driver going through Valley Street, processing the fact that there may be vehicle conflicts there. And before they can stop deciding about that and focus on the next issue, which is the driveway to this site, it's just too close to allow drivers to make those decisions independently. So, my recommendation would be, and I realize there's some grading and fill issues and stuff, but it's gonna be there forever once we approve it. So my recommendation would be to put the entrance as close to opposite Valley Street as you can. So you got an intersection here, then you let the Joffrein driveway and Mr. Quaglieri's concept for across the street, the, the Joffrein driveway and his driveway exactly lined up. So that makes a little bit of sense, you got an intersection, a bit of space, and then another intersection with two fairly major driveways coming out. So that would, that would be my recommendation. I know Rick had some concerns with it in terms of having to move a pole, uh, but there's a pole that has to be moved here. I know it would cause him to maybe have to put in an additional catch basin or two or move them or something. But, um, I, I think it's a pretty significant issue. I'd, I'd like to see it opposite Valley Street, that'd be my recommendation, so.
I mean, I think that the consensus is that this is less than ideal, and it's just a matter of whether it rises to the level of a, you know, potential hazard. And I, let me try to put your concern into practical terms. And tell me if this.
Sure.
And tell me if this describes your concern. So, someone who is pulling out from Valley Street onto Route one fourteen, one fifteen, there might be oncoming traffic coming from Route one that direction. So, they see that traffic. They see a car approaching Route one on one fifteen, coming from four kicks in that direction. So, I mean, the way folks drive, I mean, you wait for that car to clear, and you're going to pull across, and you're going to think that you've got safe travel across that lane. And if someone is stopping to go into the car wash, now you've got a potential issue where you can't continue across the lane and you have oncoming traffic. So, now the question is, how realistic is that scenario? And does that describe your concern where because they're not offset?
But it applies equally to through traffic also. In other words, you're, let's say you're heading towards Route one. Under my scenario, you'd have one intersection with Valley Street entering from the left, the car wash drive entering from the right, and all the potential vehicle conflicts arising from left and right turns there. The driver has to process that, understand whether it's safe to go through. And immediately, when he or she has cleared the intersection, before you can really perceive what's happening, there's another intersection, and there's not sufficient stopping site distance that if you weren't able to correctly perceive whether there were conflicts here, you don't have time to stop. It's just the close spacing of the driveways and the intersection. That's why we have, one of the reasons we have spacing in the rules and regs for minimum distances between driveways and intersections and all that type of thing. So, are there more hazardous things in Massachusetts? I suppose there are. I mean, you'll find gas station driveways coming right into your intersections, which is not ideal. But if you're asking me from an engineering point of view what's preferable, I think it's clear that coming in opposite Valley Street is preferable. As I say, there are worse conditions, but I'm concerned we're just making a fundamentally wrong design decision. And my recommendation would be to bring it in opposite Valley.
Now, Jeff, didn't we get the emails, sorry, that we got today from both Chuck Stone and Cole Bushnell? Was in support of this plan?
I had asked Betsy to, Monday morning, to send an email to Chief Stone and Chief Bushnell, which she did, and she did solicit comments, which, you know, Chief Stone, he cited no issues with the concept, nor did Chief Bushnell. So, you are correct.
I might have been reading them fast. I thought they were just saying, we're awfully glad they're not using the frontage road. I thought it was more, I thought it was a more, anything is better than.
Not building it.
Than not going to Joffrey, going onto Joffrein's property. I didn't know that it was.
Do we have those here?
I didn't know that it was specific to this location of the drive. And the reason I say that is because I do agree with what Tom is saying, which is, which is that, you know, lining up, lining up turning, you know, opportunities to turn perpendicular to the main drive is what you normally do.
They're right there, Jeff. So, Jeff, can we ask them to speak to what some of the challenges are for you on the downside of this?
Yeah, we will. Why don't we read this for the record? Do you want to read that?
I understand the plan.
This is from Chief Cole.
Oh, yeah. Chuck.
Stone.
Yeah, Chief Stone.
Police chief.
Police chief.
Thank you.
I understand the plan is drawn. If I understand the plan as drawn, the Cottage Car Wash has direct access to Route one fifteen Pine Street, and the frontage road will be a paper road, if needed in the future, much like everyone else on that side of the street. I appreciate all who had a part in making this change a reality and wish the owners of the business much success. I endorse the latest plan as drawn. And then Fire Chief Bushnell said that he would echo the police chief's comments. For the fire department, we can reach the site in an emergency. Now, he endorses the plan.
Okay, so if we put that aside for a second, can we talk about how high the bar would be to do something similar or perhaps something consistent with what Mr. Houston has described in terms of offset with Valley Street?
Yeah, we did look at the offset of Valley Street with an entrance road. Site grading in that area would be challenging, to say the least, and a retaining wall would probably be required. The proposed site pole connection across one fifteen, and then the beginning of the underground is to come down this area here, pole to be located here. We would have an issue with that. I would like to point out that the underground drainage basins are in, the drainage lines are in, with the exception of what runs to the trench drain in this area here. So, the basins, manholes, and the lines are in, the tanks are in. So, to relocate an electric service at this point would be challenging, to say the least, from the sidewalk, from the curb line, the property line is approximately five feet. So, we don't have a lot of room. We'd be looking at a retaining wall, potentially a guardrail, and also to fit a utility pole in there to begin the underground service. And probably, the biggest issue with respect to this is the impervious would be at seventy-two percent, which exceeds a seventy percent allowance. We're at sixty-eight point six, I believe, with this proposal. But the addition of this amount of pavement, and what we looked at would, you know, be to reduce this pavement here, thus trying to create, you know, curve something similar to that. So, we'd have an impervious coverage issue as well. So, we did look at that.
Which would be a variance?
That would be a zoning board issue. So, this board's probably well aware. Section J of the bylaws provides setback, offset distances from driveways to driveways, as well as driveways on one side of the street to the other. And if I'm interpreting Section J four A five, alignments of drives and streets on the opposite side of highways, second paragraph, second sentence states, other drives and streets accept access to corner lots which front on both Route one A and one fifteen, and interim drives shall be staggered across one A and one fifteen by distances of one hundred feet or more. So, you know, I believe we have the one hundred foot and eleven distance, if we measure it to the centerline of the throat and one hundred and nineteen to there. So, what we're really looking at is the distance from driveway to driveway.
And that's J, what is that?
J four A five.
It's a brand new one.
Oh, there you go. Hot pink bits.
Okay, so, just to summarize, you feel that because you're exceeding the one hundred feet between the, it's the edge, the edge, or is it the center? It's the centerline?
It doesn't define centerline to centerline in that specific section. It states one hundred feet. Section J four A four C, which is the interim drive section, is the only section where they talk about offsets that says, that states from centerline to centerline. That's generally how they're, generally how they're measured.
And from centerline to centerline, how much is the offset in this plan?
Well, what we did was we measured from the throat, which would be the mid-distance where the curves start for the curbing, and we have one hundred and eleven feet. And then we took the centerline of, you know, the approximate travelway here before it enters into this odd intersection. And that's one hundred and nineteen feet from the center of our proposed driveway. So, the real issue is, you know, two hundred and fifty foot requirement from driveways on the same side of the street.
So, Tom, in terms of that, that math, in terms of the centerline to centerline, does that hang together? Is there something we're missing? Because Valley doesn't approach at ninety degrees. It's kind of a lateral type of intersection. So, I'm not sure that the.
I'm sure that Rick is correctly reading the bylaw. But I would think in this instance, the bylaw is not completely supportive of good traffic design practice. So, I would still maintain the rec. Well, I'm recommending purely on a vehicle operation safety basis that the driveway should be on the other side of the site. There are many, you know, other values, and Rick, I think, has articulated them, why he wants to put it there. But, you know, I would still push in my direction.
I think if there's an interim drive opportunity, first of all, separate and apart of all of your efforts here, you know, the idea of abandoning an order of conditions, I think, is a horrible idea as a board, just because somebody next door decided to dig in, okay? That notwithstanding, let's take the interim drive in the spirit that the bylaw was originally created, which was interim until the access road is, oh, excuse me, frontage road is developed. Now, the point is, whether or not the town is going to step up to the plate and exhaust their remedies to see this thing to the end or not, shouldn't be something that Mike and Cottage Car Wash has held hostage on. And, you know, if the interim drive has to stay there until the town exhausts its remedies against Joffrein, then so be it. You know, we've discussed it. Rick has brought up issue. Tom has a contrary issue to it, but there are mitigating circumstances. The police chief has weighed in on it. The fire chief has weighed in on it. They've all seen the plan.
So, in terms of, you know, the order of conditions, the original order of conditions and such, you know, I think I hear what you're saying in terms of us moving away from them, I guess, as a town. But, I mean, the applicant is looking for us to do this. This is what they want because they're looking to develop the property sooner rather than later, you know, get tied up in litigation.
The applicant's looking to do this because we or the affiliated boards to us didn't do their job, i.e., forced the issue with the abutter. That's the way I read it.
Ten years ago.
Not just ten years ago.
Ten, twelve years ago.
We forced the issue just recently. It just didn't get anywhere.
They didn't force the issue.
The easement was never filed by the abutter.
You know what?
And it was a condition, but let's.
Let's have that conversation separate and apart.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we do want to weigh in on that after. But let's stick to this right now.
Right. Now, see, my assumption, now, you just did use the word interim drive. Now, I'm assuming it's going to be permanent. You know, I'm just assuming that it's, that once it goes in, it's just always going to be there. And I think it should be in the safest place possible. And I agree that it should be across from Valley.
It's awkward not being able to see these grade changes that you speak of because, I mean, it does sound kind of significant, retaining walls where there aren't retaining walls now.
Right.
There's a big hole down there on the right side.
I mean, I have the previous plan, the original plan, with the site grading on it.
Because you came prepared.
I try. We have a one eighty-seven, seven grade here. We project that line out and attempt to try, tie into site grading, you know, one ninety-three grade, one ninety-three fifty. We have a catch basin here. What we looked at was running up at one percent over a hundred feet to a maximum elevation, and then creating a slight flip to keep the road surface water into the, in the gutter of the roadway, maintain that one percent of the catch basin. And then when you add that up to the curb height, we've got a one eighty, one eighty-nine seventy here. We'd be up one ninety-two fifty, you know, is the grade here at the top of curb at the one ninety-two contour. So, we'd be up around the one ninety-three fifty, maybe, at the maximum height to a one eighty-nine seventy. And we've got approximately five feet. So, now, if we get into a retaining wall, we have guardrail, and then we have the utility pole all to fit in that space. And, you know, you can see the tanks are in this location, the electric service to be here. We've got drainage, utility, like, and I mean, we don't want the utility pole in the middle of the site right by that entrance. You know, we really prefer not to have it at all, but we need to get across one fifteen, unfortunately. You know, so we are looking at all these different things. I mean, to me, the biggest one is the lot coverage. You know, when we exceed that seventy percent.
The new permit.
It's a variance from, as I see it, the Board of Appeals, which is very, can be very time consuming.
Let me ask a question. You know, in terms of a traffic study, what would the outcome of a traffic study most likely be in terms of this plan?
Well, I think the only thing that would be germane with respect to a traffic study because a small site of this nature is not going to indicate that signal control or anything is necessary. Knowing the volume on Valley Street, it's not necessarily there either. You could measure the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which would tell you what the stopping site distance is. But, you know, it's probably two to three hundred feet. So, it's kind of almost an irrelevant parameter. So, I don't really, I don't see a traffic study being particularly helpful here. They've aligned Valley Street now with a sort of perpendicular intersection. You know, if it was in its old condition, you might think of upgrading that. But, you know, I don't see a productive use of a traffic study in this instance, so.
What do you think of the grade challenge that you just pointed out?
Well, I mean, you know, it's an issue, and I certainly don't want to cost Mr. Brayband any money. I understand he's having, you know, difficulty with this project. But, you know, I guess when I, the reason I'm concerned about it is I'm tending to view this thing as permanent. You know, if it is realistic that, you know, something could be done to restore the original configuration of the site, I'd probably be less concerned about it. But I am kind of thinking, once it gets built, it's there forever. So, every vehicle that goes by there has a slight increased chance of having a vehicle crash. And so, as I say, are there worse conditions in Massachusetts? Sure, but.
Rick, can I see the color scheme again, please? But this interim drive is probably as easy to abandon as anyone ever proposed. If you take a look at it.
It's not the interim, it's not how interim the drive is. It's how difficult is it to get the frontage road built? It's how difficult is it to get the opposite?
And I think there are, based on my research, I think there are remedies that can do it, just can't do it in the timeframe that our applicant can in fact survive this complete misstep by the town of Norfolk.
Yeah, but is the town going to pursue that? Or if he builds this drive, are they going to close the hook and that's it?
When the, when the fire chief and the police chief have said, you know, that there's, you know, that this is a preferred alternative?
No, they didn't really say that, did they?
Yeah, they kind of said doors.
I mean, am I correct that the only concern that we have at this point involves traffic safety? Yes?
Yeah.
No other concern, right?
Well, the alternative, the, if he were to go to, if he were to relocate, going to another board is a serious concern. It's, I consider it.
In terms of going to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, I consider the time delay is a serious, is a serious issue.
I would anticipate a zoning board filing and permit and appeal period would be ninety to one hundred twenty days.
Yeah, I just don't think he has that time.
Is there something you could do with the site, Rick, in terms of, you know, putting in some green? I mean, at this corner, you know, if the entrance should go over here and.
Yeah, with the entrance. Yeah, with the entrance over here, we rounded this corner. And even with that reduction, it was still at seventy-two percent. You know, these are parking spaces up here. Maybe this side shows it a little better. Parking spaces here.
Well, you know, one thing, does it, you know, if, if, um, the en- the entrance exit was over here, does that driveway have to be that wide? I think it's that wide because it's echoing the frontage road requirement for twenty-four feet. If it's one-way traffic, there could be eighteen feet. You mentioned the curving and, um, I bet, I mean, I understand you, you haven't done a detailed design here.
Right. Yeah, we're pr- probably looking at about seven hundred square feet we need to lose to get to two percent. So, two percent of thirty-one thousand.
I missed that, Tom, you suggesting that maybe you have one way in and then another way out?
No, no, I was just saying that, that.
Heart right across.
Pulling this island out?
Yeah, when you leave, well, you can do that, yeah, when you leave the car wash, well, that would be possible too. You can rid of the aisle, put the spaces against the edge and just compress the whole paved area. Or if you did wanna maintain some kind of a driveway through here, this is twenty-four feet because it reflects the frontage road concept. But functionally, if you had sixteen feet or eighteen feet, that would be plenty to be, because nobody, nobody would go in that way. You gotta queue around the other way. So it's just an egress function. So sixteen feet to do it as opposed to twenty-four, so.
Over a couple, over a couple hundred feet? Does it, does it get to two hundred?
No, we don't even have a, we have a hundred fifty feet of frontage, so it's not, not nearly that long. You know, we'd be looking at, you know, that piece there.
Sixteen to eight, so it'd be eight times seventy-five. So we're kind of on our way to eight hundred square feet. Looking in the wrong direction.
Um, I just, I just wanna stay on track with one thing. You know, we can talk about bank financing and the speed of the project and all that. And that's very important, obviously, to me and my family. But I also want the board to understand, we have an approved site plan that we spent a tremendous amount of time, energy, trying to do it right, trying to make it where it's gonna be an optimum car wash. And now people are coming in and just saying, well, you know, we can, we can narrow the roads and we can, you know, change the parking lot designs. You know, that's not what I want. I mean, we wanna work with everybody to fix the problem that we're in here. And that's very important to me and safety is very important to me. However, I just don't want everyone losing sight that, you know, I'm trying to speed up the project or I'm just dealing with bank financing issues because that's the project I want, right there. That's the site I want, that's the site that's been approved. And it's very important to me. And I think it would be important to the board as well.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not gonna try to speak for everyone, but I, what I'm hearing are some very practical and, I think, legitimate concerns. And the question is whether they rise to the level of something that should, you know, preclude you from moving ahead with that plan. Um, I think we all would like to see you move forward as quickly as possible. Um, I think, you know, if we were to have problems, you know, and have a safety issue and find that, you know, people getting hurt in front of your property, uh, you know, I could speak for myself, I wouldn't feel very good about that personally, that, you know, I didn't anticipate. Um, but none of us are traffic experts. And perhaps, perhaps, you know, I go back to the point I was gonna make earlier that at least in terms of the regulations, strictly speaking, um, if what Mr. Gaudreau says is true in terms of the distance that there is in excess of one hundred feet. Okay? We have some input which, you know, I'm looking at the comments from Chief Stone and I think his closing comment was that he supports the plan.
The plan.
So, you know, there's a couple of, you know, data points. Um, so, you know, I myself, obviously, I've been driving a long time, so there's some perspective I have, but I'm by no means a traffic expert. Um, so, right now, I'm not personally feeling as though, you know, I have concerns that rise to the level of, um, opposing your, your plan. That, that's myself personally. It's not ideal, um, and I think we can all agree, it's not ideal. But, um, I'm not sure it rises to the level where I can't support it. So, I guess, you know, so each board member will form their own opinions. And if I understand the process correctly, I think this would have to be, um, we would have to vote on this as a minor modification, correct? First of all, the, the board would have to vote and agree, uh, four members on that it's a, um, minor modification. And then the board would need to, um, approve the, the modification. So it's a two-step process that requires a super majority of the board.
What's listed on the, on the agenda as a modification, so it's, would be permissible to consider tonight, I think.
Well, that was the request from Mr. Mitchell.
Any other comments?
It's not gonna be an o- optimal plan out of this whole mess. There was one, we approved it a long time ago. That's, that was the optimal.
Any other comments, questions before?
I'm done.
It stinks, you know, the whole thing stinks.
Yeah.
Cause the question is, does it rise to the level where?
I honestly think.
Can't support it, that's, that's.
No, I, I honestly think that, um, it's gonna be, that ultimately it, it comes down to the traffic at the car wash is gonna be heavier on, on Saturdays. And Joffran's traffic tends to be on the week, during the week.
Correct.
So, let's just, you know, cross our fingers.
You know, certainly for, for that direction, you know, that issue which is the, that might be the only.
That driveway's the close drive, that's, that, it's that distance.
Yeah, strictly from our regulation standpoint, yeah, you're correct. That's, that's the only issue in terms of the dimensional, of on the dimensional standpoint. So, and you're right, Monday through Friday operation versus a Saturday, Sunday.
Probably weekend, you know.
Type of operation.
Is it possible for us to approve a driveway there?
Approve a driveway where?
In that location.
Which is that, Steve?
What, does a waiver?
Anywhere along that frontage. I, I thought, I thought that the zoning required two hundred and fifty feet.
Interim drive he's asking for.
Oh, interim.
Steve! I think we just approved one earlier, didn't we?
Did we? We discussed it.
Who believed it was an interim?
And is that based on the fact that it's temporary?
Temporary pending the frontage road. Which in this case could very well come true if other powers that be want to enforce our or- orders of conditions.
Let's, let's have that discussion later.
And that is, could we approve it with a condition that if there are, you know, a certain percentage of traffic issues that are redesigned, similar to what we've been talking about at Dunkin' Donuts, may have to be open for consideration. I don't personally, I wanna help you guys get this moving. I don't wanna cost you any more money, but I feel torn. I don't wanna just cross my fingers. I mean, we're being told from good traffic engineering, it's not the smartest way to do it. We're hearing that there are issues with relocating it, but it's still feasible. I know it costs more money and I don't wanna do that to you, but I feel torn. I don't wanna just cross my fingers and hope for the good. I don't think that's a responsible job of the town. I know there are worse situations in Massachusetts, but we're starting fresh. I don't wanna make a bad situation. I don't want, I can't sleep at night knowing that, I'm just crossing my fingers. So I wanna do the right thing and, and help you get there, but I wanna be able to sleep at night. So could we do it with some kind of condition that if there are problems?
It's been built into other s- the site plan.
I know that that would have potential cost implications too. But that might be sort of a moderate way to say, let, let's try it. And, and, and maybe it won't be a problem at all because of the traffic flow, because of the timing. And that would be the best solution for everybody. But what if it is? What if it is a problem?
So the question would be, you know, how do you articulate that? You know, what's the trigger that says that it is a problem? You know, I mean, I, I don't have any experience with something like that in terms of how you put that to words.
Well, there, there are published crash rates that Mass DOT has.
We're not gonna trigger, trigger those.
I think we're kind of o- over-technologing it if we, I mean, I think if you, you know, I, I think if you make a decision, you, it should stand in perpetuity. I mean, it's, 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 it's a safety issue, but.
How did we do it for Dunkin' Donuts?
I don't think it was in the decision, it was, just became obvious.
No, I think we had it in the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through decision.
Really? Well, then that's, that's what we should look at, cause.
Well, I mean, in terms of cars being backed up on the roadway, that's one issue that's more definable. You know, you can definitely articulate that in a decision. But, you know, if there's no backup onto the roadway in terms of the queue for the car wash, that's an entirely different situation in terms of how you characterize a.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this site is fine in terms of available queuing.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Once you get to building, it's a double queue, so.
You gotta really want a car wash to, to wait on Pine Street for a car wash.
The Braybands is hoping.
But the, the, uh, the, the traditional, um, DOT evaluation is a, is a reduction in service. And, uh, you know, and, and crashes. And that just, they're just not, we're not likely to reach those levels.
Well, it, it's a crash rate per million vehicles entering. So it takes, at this location, it would take a while to accumulate that data.
Yeah, so it's.
How many years would it take?
Yeah, it's not gonna. Well, you have, are you checking the Dunkin' Donuts? We can, we can look into, we can look into that concept and try to pull that concept into the decision. We can put it in, we can put it in as eloquent, eloquently as possible.
Well, one of the things we might be able to do is to, um, I don't know if there's any infrastructure that would be in the location that we would ideally want in the event that this became a problem, so that wouldn't be any more costly to make a change. So maybe that's something that we could incorporate into the plan. So if that change, a change needed to be made, it wouldn't be any more costly than.
It would just be the utility pole location. You know, at that point, if, if presumably the driveway didn't go here or here was in fact aligned, it would be the utility pole.
So, I mean, should we try to prevent a utility pole from being planted there? I, you'd have to have it on a plan as a future, you know, dash lines or something, right, for the?
Yeah, I mean, we have.
Our company to.
Yeah, we're gonna work.
I don't think anybody gets to decide where poles get put except the utility company.
Well, I think if you have a plan that has. Get them to put one in.
Yeah, if you can get them to put them in.
Yeah, that's the hardest thing is getting it started.
It's been about six months and they're, they're crazy. Um, but they're difficult to deal with. You know, the utility pole location is there. I mean, ideally, you know, we'd prefer to have it there, but if we had to slide it over, we could. But, you know, you're still dealing with that guard rail retaining wall. You've got a five-foot area from the curb to the property line to fit a guard rail, to fit a retaining wall, to fit that.
You know, before we, okay, and say something that's acceptable to the proponent.
You, you understand what I'm suggesting. At least ma- you know, try to ensure that if a change had to be made in the future, it's not gonna be more costly to make the change. Whether or not we'll get to that.
The only point I, I would, would make is we already have a very good option.
Right.
We have a very good option that the board and I myself agree on. And that's the frontage road and the access out of Joe Fran's lot. So if, if the interim or this, this drive out on one fifteen was ever dangerous, we certainly could choose to enforce, I guess. Or how you're gonna do that, I have no idea. How, how that, that problem's gonna get straightened out, which is truly the root of the problem.
I like that.
Um, is there any, I guess this is a question for Larry. Is, uh, is there any, is there any remedy you have against the town, possibly?
I, uh, I sent a letter, uh, I don't know, it was, it was a couple of months ago. I know, I know there was some question, I know Town Council had rendered, apparently had rendered an opinion to someone in the town saying that, well, yeah, you, you screwed up, but you can't be sued. So, uh, I wouldn't do anything. That was suggested, I'm, I'm paraphrasing. But my response was, I guess that would be for a court to determine if, if, if there was a remedy. I, I believe there would be. I also believe, like I said when I opened this meeting, uh, that there would be a remedy against Mr. Roy. But again, it's the, it's the time and there's a time and expense involved there and that didn't, that didn't help Michael.
I, I guess my concern in where I'm going from is here, is if we could lean to, say, what you're proposing, but find a way, if possible, to get out of there before there are concerns that develop through crash data or otherwise. I hate to say it, but, y- you know, I think you need to move against the town to say, enforce your order of conditions. And that way, I think that would happen a lot quicker than we can even assemble crash data.
Yeah.
That was a possib- I mean, that's always a possibility. I also, I also suggested that, uh, that, that Joe Fran could be, uh, at the very least, there should be a daily fine to, for, for not complying. That, that could have been instituted. There could have been a lot of things done. Um, I guess we could move against the town, they, they would move to dismiss, I would anticipate. And then it would be an argument in front of a judge whether or not the town had immunity from prosecution in that regard. Um, obviously, that'll, I mean, if you're saying, put the interim drive in and prove it and then we proceed against, it wouldn't just be against the town, it would have to be against the town and Joe Fran. And ask that, at the same time, ask that, uh, restraining order be issued requiring them to issue the easement, which could all become moved down the road at some point. But it's a process.
I mean, I think just, one, one, I would just wanna finish this, Jeff. I mean, if I was in Mike Brayband's seat right now, I'd say, you know, to the town, hey, step up to the plate, exhaust all your remedies, I did everything in good faith, and now you're abandoning me. And that's the way I see it, okay? And that's why I feel so strongly about it. Believe me, ask Steve. I am the least favored son of frontage roads in this town, okay? But in this case, we made you go that route and you were happy to do it.
Um, we, we did have conversations through myself and my attorney with certain members of the town. Uh, the planning board chairman was down at a meeting at the car wash at Mr. Roy's request. There have been multiple emails and conversations about light poles and trees that my neighbor had an issue with safety, but didn't care that I couldn't get access to my lot if one of my people got hurt on my lot. Because they have no intention of moving the tree and no intention of moving the light pole. So it seems to me like I've reached out to everyone I possibly can to, and what I've been getting from most people is, we're not doing anything about it. So at that stage, someone has to pick the pieces up and say, hey, we're gonna build this and we're gonna keep moving on. And, you know, I guess that has to be me.
I, I understand. And, and just to be clear, I mean, it's not the role of the planning board to enforce these types of things. And none of us are attorneys. And so, you know, generally speaking, we rely on Town Council to, to make recommendations and provide advice, um, the same way the other boards and committees do. So that's what we've done. And we have done nothing different than, than that. And that's consistent with our charter as far as a, a planning board. We're sympathetic to you, we're trying to move the project along. So I'm just gonna come back to the point that if we can cheat that pole over and try to minimize the cost associated with a redesign, if it does not include, you know, the Joe Fran property and that, and that easement, if we can do that, I personally can support this. Whether or not there's enough of us that can support this is another question. So I guess, you know, I'll look to my colleagues here as to whether or not there is enough support, you know, for the, the project as proposed.
Well, I, I, I think that Peter's got a very good point there that, um, we as a board should try to get some resolution on, on that whole issue of access on the front. Because. Because.
Irrespective of the applicant.
Irrespective of the applicant, right. Out of your hands.
But they wanna wash cars sooner rather than later, so that's not gonna, that's not gonna get any cars washed.
And he's absolutely correct about it. I knew that whole thing about the offset of 100 feet on the opposite side of the street and everything else. But the only problem that I had was I knew that there was another development going in on the other side of the street. It's gonna, I, I just think that if, if there are gonna be three driveways that don't line up in that one section, that there might be an issue. But, you know, it's, if there are issues getting in from the, the side with, with Valley Street, now, that is my preferred location to go in. But if there are issues that you're talking about, about not being able to regrade and having to put in retaining wall and having a guardrail and having the pole in a five-foot area, no, then that's a good argument. But, but like he said, you know, if, if we are gonna put the driveway in there, we should do everything we can to get that, to make it interim so that we can get the original plan active.
I agree with you.
So in terms of some wording that if, at such time, if at such time, and I'm not sure exactly how it would be worded in terms of whether it's the town's initiative or what have you, that an alternative location for access egress was pursued and successfully, you know, pursued, that, you know, you would be agreeable to make the change. You know, so that, you know, if in fact that option is available in the future, and I'm not, I'm not sure how that comes about, but I would think there needs to be some language that suggests that you would be agreeable to make the change in the future. And I guess treating it as an interim road, is that by definition what an interim?
That's exactly what an interim drive would be, right. And interim road doesn't have to go to ZVA regardless of the setback.
Correct.
Right, which is a huge step.
So, yeah, we would approve it as an interim.
Although there are, there are descriptions in zoning about interim roads as well as regular driveways, so gotta be careful when we.
I think we, I think I've read it. I just, I was reading through there. I didn't see any referral.
My client was just pointing out, he said, the original plan as, as approved with the frontage road and the access, and he would actually prefer that in any event, so he wouldn't have a problem.
Better stacking.
Excuse me?
Better stacking for the car.
Cueing, yeah. And, and everything's already designed that way. The building was done with that in mind. Everything was done that way. So if that were to come about and, and, and that, that developed on the road, then he would utilize that access.
So we could reference that plan, you know, as being.
The original.
The original plan in the event that the easement is available.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and just partly why, why we like this design is it's, it's the closest we can do to the original agreed-upon design. In my, in my opinion. This, this, the flow, the traffic, you know, it doesn't change. We can't change the building now with all the drying and, and. If, if we were gonna go with a different design, we'd turn the building a different way.
Oh.
Coming on the front, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Those decisions have been made.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so just as a procedural question, just back to, you know, the fact that, I guess the agenda refers to modification, but this is in fact, we would have to follow, follow the minor modification.
Yeah, the, the first vote would be for the board to determine that it is a minor mo-, what is being requested is a minor modification of the site plan. And then the second vote would be to approve the, the modification as indicated on the sketch plan.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no other questions, comments, I guess I'll look for a motion and we'll.
Well, well, before we do that, I mean, I, I know that you talked about the drainage that you're gonna be capturing with, with, with new configuration, but where actually are you gonna be capturing it? I mean, is, is there anything that's gonna be coming out onto 115? Or has it been completely redesigned to be able to take it to the back where it's supposed to go?
Small couple of feet out here as we create that gutter, just to come from the edge of the roadway up with a gutter. That small two or three feet will come out. And then the rest of it will come along this gutter and travel to the base.
All right.
That's a, that's a very flat. I went by there, and it's a pretty flat entrance. So I think, I mean, however you grade it, I think they'll be able to keep anything off 115.
I guess, how about site distances in that location? So if you're coming, if you're exiting the driveway on the left, what, what trees are gonna be remaining? I, I get the photograph here.
Yeah, there'll be some trees down in this area, but they're relatively close to the lot line. So I mean, it's not much different than what you have at Joe Fran now. I don't know if you have a picture that kinda shows.
Yeah, why don't you, you know, why don't you at least, I mean, that's the least we can do to try to mitigate the traffic. I guess you should just make sure that those are good site distances.
Right, so these trees here. It's difficult to tell really from these pictures. But, yeah, I mean, I've pulled out of the entrance that's been created for the construction vehicles there. And there's not a site distance issue from that. This is moving down 40 feet, and the trees in between would be coming out, so.
Those pictures really don't give you a good view of what we're, we're looking at, Jeff, unfortunately.
My memory is that you've got some pretty high, you've got shade trees that have been limbed up pretty high. So I don't really feel.
What you're talking about is right down on this corner, Tom. I think there's a couple or three there.
Yeah, there may be, but.
Right.
The pine trees, we know on the Joe Fran side are a problem, but the deciduous trees in front of this side, I don't think are measurable.
Now, those, some of those trees are in the right-of-way, the town's right-of-way?
I think they are in the right-of-way, but I don't see a problem with them, yeah.
Okay.
So, if you're willing to.
I think that originally, the trees in the right-of-way, we actually gave them credit for, if, because they were left, they didn't have to put street trees on their property. So if we have to revisit, do any of those trees have to come down? We should revisit the need to, to plant replacements.
We'd agree to a condition of a one-to-one if we take a tree down, replant the tree in that vicinity.
Cause they were.
That's something that the board would consider.
Preferably set back more so it's not a sightline issue.
Right, we prefer to have it onsite as opposed to in the right-of-way, but.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Along the frontage line, we're not gonna move them 50 feet away, you know, kinda step back onto the property, if you will. If there's obviously a void left by a tree, yeah. You know, and obviously anything at the driveway that was an issue we put in that area. But maybe spread it around. We've got room in that area to plant.
I think we should probably be specific that they not get planted in the right-of-way proposed easement as, as has happened in other sites.
Between the frontage road easement that exists and, and that, that 20-foot strip would be the place to put them.
Yeah, I can see that.
That'd be great.
Okay. And then if there was some language that basically said that it's understood that the preferred method of access egress, location of access egress was the original plan, you know, and in such cases that becomes viable in the future, that you would be cooperative in terms of, you know, relocating the access e-, you know, egress location.
Very consistent to J4 A4C. Basically says if there's an interim drive and a, and a permanent drive comes in, you have to abandon the interim drive. So if you want, take that language.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to consider this. I'm sorry, Chuck, you have a comment?
Me?
No.
Does the public have the speech? Go right ahead, yeah.
With a mic, with a mic.
My name's Al Quarglary. I have the parcel on the corner of Valley and Pine Street where we have a engineering probably about 50% complete, 50% completed for a 20,000-square-foot building with 75 parking spots. The exit of that property will line up directly with Joe Fran. So obviously, the applicant has been screwed here. And, you know, I, I wish him the fastest approval he can get. I just would like the same sympathy that the board has given to the applicant to me. So when Tom makes his list of all the reasons why my entrance shouldn't go across from Joe Fran, that you will take the same tack that you took for this applicant.
I don't think, I don't think Tom would.
Or any of the new amendments that may be taking his place, taking the place. Secondly, I can't believe the town of Norfolk is a toothless tiger now. There were two instances where I was fined $300 a day for a sign that was one foot out of compliance. And Andrea, you, you sent the email to Bob Bullock, and Bob Bullock sent me the, the fine. There was another instance where.
Was, it was more than a foot.
Like the sight of the wall, and I got dragged in here on the carpet. So to say that you don't have any options, that the charter says you can't help this guy out, are you kidding me? Bob Bullock, at $300.
Al, Al, no, no, you can't, because you're making the implication that this board has the authority to allow this gentleman to, to access egress on Joe Fran's property. This board does not have that authority to do that.
And I never said it did. If, if you'd let me finish, I could tell you exactly what I said.
Proceed.
That at $300 a day, $9,000 a month, this thing would have been settled a long time ago. This issue's been around for over two months. You gotta be kidding me? I mean, the to-, the town is shameful in this. Done nothing, and to hear that, that the town council is saying, put your tail between your legs and run and leave this guy high and dry, you gotta be kidding me? And to have you guys sit there and say we can do nothing? If I didn't put those steps in.
Al, Al, no, stop right there, Al, stop right there. I understand what you're saying, but the gentleman wants to develop his property. He's not gonna be developing his property anytime soon, in my opinion, in spite of what you think Norfolk is capable of doing, based on what I've been told from town council. I'm not an attorney. No, no, none of us on the board are attorneys. So we're supposed to, you know, respect, you know, as long as we feel it's, you know, reasonable and appropriate, the recommendations of town council, and that's what we've done. So to suggest that, you know, we can, you know, intervene here as a planning board, I disagree with that. I'm not, I don't think that's in the best interest of the residents of the town. So we hea-, we heard you, Al. We heard you. Please.
And I just wanted to show the historical facts that that isn't accurate.
All right, let's move this forward.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider the proposed change of, as, as submitted by Rick, United Consultants, be considered a minor modification sub-, subject to the conditions of the one-to-one planting. And did we have some other language we discussed? Well, I actually, no, we shouldn't even condition this, sorry. Just a minor modification. Sorry. I'm convoluting it.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, I would like to, do you wanna?
I'll try.
Go ahead, you, you made notes.
I'm gonna move to accept the revised plan as an interim drive decision, at which time when a permanent and preferred entrance and egress, as per the original plan, is made available, that the applicant would then use that preferred and permanent entrance and egress. Also with the condition that any trees that are removed that are existing would be replaced on a one-to-one basis, but in a preferred location and vicinity between the frontage road and the right-of-way.
Second.
The only two conditions, right?
Yes.
Is it?
Did someone second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion's been, been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This unit ends. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, you didn't have to do any hard project.
We're ju-, we're just a little behind schedule. We're just a little bit behind schedule. Okay, so the next.
The topic you really wanna talk about is coming up next, too.
All right. The next item of business, which was scheduled for 8:45 PM, it's approximately 10 minutes after 10:00, is a discussion regarding Toils End Farm, otherwise known as the Fox Run subdivision, trail locations, trail construction bond, and bond reduction for Maple Street improvements. So at our last meeting, there were conversations regarding trail location, and we agreed that the question regarding the construction bond and the release of the bond would take place at a subsequent meeting. So that's my understanding of why you're here. I guess in addition to that, I see some reference to the Maple Street improvements.
I'm not sure if this is Maple Street improvements.
Okay. Okay. So I guess for the record, you're here to discuss the construction bond, which is basically where we left off at the, the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Trail construction.
Yeah, trail construct, yeah.
How did we resolve that last meeting?
Not the bond. So basically, there's a $10,000 bond that's been established. At the end of the last meeting, the request was made that Mr. Houston, Houston visit the site, review the trails to make sure the trails complied with the, the plans, recognizing that the Board of Selectmen has exercised its responsibility now in terms of clarifying the location of the trails, which they've done. So I spoke to Mr. Houston ahead of this meeting, and I was surprised that there actually wasn't a site walk in terms of a review of the condition of the trails, because that would seem to be an essential part of any discussion as far as the bond release. So I guess, you know, help, help us understand, because there are some things that are included in the details as far as the trails, which I'm, I'm not sure those, those details exist. There's some things relative to, I guess, equipment that would prevent four-way ve-, uh, four-wheel vehicles while still allowing the horses to, to use the trails. This is, these are the trails that are away from Maple Street and quite a distance away from Warren Drive. So there's actually two of those devices, and, and I, I was hoping that, you know, Mr. Houston would have had an opportunity to review all those details and make sure that the trails were in fact up to snuff in terms of the, the plan. So, you know, where he hasn't been there, you know, I'm not sure we're gonna just rely on, you know, hearsay, but help us understand the, the condition of the trails, I guess. And, you know, we may have to defer the, the whole question of the bond release until the next meeting.
Okay. Um, I have a sketch here, which I believe represents the existing condition.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, we can share them then.
Thank you, it's all right. You can, Betty, we'll need one.
Oh, we should hit the mic if I'm done, but will these mics hear me?
There's one right there if you need it. Or you can turn this one around.
There's also a, a question with regard to the short segment of trail that is actually included in the decision. The trail segment that would be located near the pump house. So that's a.
So you can see that detail on the upper corner of your drawing. So to my knowledge, that's the only thing that is yet, that has to be constructed. The only other trail that exists is on the opposite corner of the drawing. You can see existing six-foot, six-foot trail.
Existing?
So, you know, Tom, maybe it's worth grabbing the map.
From what?
The map. We, we've got a, a plan, I should say. So we've got a plan that we're looking at, and, you know, I'm not sure that we're on the same page. I guess literally, I'm not sure we're on the same page. I don't know that we need to, you know, have a lengthy discussion about it. I'm hoping that this tells the story of where, you know, where we left off, what the expectation was, and we can get to that.
Oh, well, yeah.
So, the, the green, um, there are some details in this plan, which actually include, you know, various details in terms of width, as well as, uh, I'm not sure what that device is called for the.
Kissing gate.
Yeah, i- it's something that, um, is intended to prevent off-road vehicles from entering the walkways. Uh, the particular gate structure that's on the plan reflected the former requirement to accommodate horses on the trail, and I believe the current thought process is that horses would not be permitted on these trails, it's just people at this point. So, there might be a modification of that device, but the, the, there is, in two locations on that green trail that loops around the, um, the paddocks area there, there, there's a, a symbol G, I believe, and that, that relates to the G over in the corner of the drawing, which describes the gate.
I thought horses were only discouraged, uh, going toward Maple Street. I didn't think there was any problem with horses.
No, that doesn't prohibit horses.
I thought it was a town bylaw.
No, that got, that's the opposite now. The town bylaw actually got changed to allow horses on town roads, even.
Oh.
It did?
Yeah.
We're going back to horse and buggies, didn't you?
I didn't know that.
So, so I guess.
I didn't know they changed it.
As, as I see it.
I'm opinion one way or the other.
You know, there's the, those two devices, they're basically the same, whatever they end up, you know, being, and there's some detail, but those two devices, I think, in terms of having some type of signage so people can recognize that it is the beginning of a trail, and, you know, there are, there's some language to it, which, um, references Rentham in here, but, you know, I don't know why we wouldn't have at least something so that people know that it's the, the head to a trail. Not asking for anything, you know, that's too, too extravagant here, just, just something, and there's some detail in here to that extent. And then, of course, the, the segment near the pump station, so there would always be a permanent access to that, um, that open space and, and those trails. So, that's something that you may not be in a position to construct until the pump house is in place, and Mr. Houston is telling me there's some interest in them actually faulty-making a slight change in terms of, uh, the pump house details and, and such. So, it may be premature, it looks like it's premature to me to release the bond. I think there's still some work.
Okay. I, I'm not sure I understand exactly what the work is, but I guess I'll figure it out.
Are you, are you familiar with that, that plan, it is the plan set?
And you're saying there's a, you're saying there's a plan later in the set, which actually identifies trailhead markers?
There's an example in there, yeah, for, uh, for Rentham, but, um, I, I don't know without going through all the details in terms of what's referenced for trailheads for, for Norfolk.
Well, I know that the pla- that this decision references a separate plan. There, there's a separate plan that is a trail plan.
Trail plan.
It's not in this set.
And that trail plan was supposed to be produced by the Board of Selectmen after a resolved.
No, 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 there's a trail, the, the decisions named a specific trail plan. And if, um, if, uh, I, I don't know whether or not it was ever in the decision that said that, um, it didn't have to be built at any time. I don't remember the exact language that's in here. Is this the, the trail plan?
Uh, it may be.
That's the one that I thought was the trail plan, who identified.
Ah, this may very well be it, I, I recognize this.
And then at the planning board, at the Board of Selectmen Day, disavowed it.
Yeah, 'cause we marked it.
The gr- the green trail is the green trail, but there are additional trail improvements. This one, I believe, this would have been stricken.
Well, th- those trails exist, they already exist, we've already walked those trails, we know that they're there. Well, if they don't wanna improve them, that's one thing, but it's another thing to say, well, this is no longer a trail, because those trails are definitely there. We've walked every single one of these trails, and a lot of them are really obvious.
So, the solid lines are trails that are existing supposedly, is that correct?
Correct, that blue one, I know that that blue one, and I know that they walk on these. So, they're, uh, that one was one that was always kind of questioned.
And is, and that's off the table?
Yeah, I can, I can see that one being off the table, because it kinda dead ends at that peak. But anyone can go up there if they want to, if they, if they know where the boundaries are. That, that was my issue when I was talking to you guys a couple of weeks ago, when I was saying that anyone can wander through these things, and there's lots of trails there. The only thing I'm concerned about is wandering onto private property once you're out there, because those trails are definitely there.
She made a good point, that, that the property owners, if it was a problem, could, could post something rather than us putting something there now became a problem. And I, I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
So, in the Board of Selectmen moved that no new trails be constructed. Rob Garrity moved that no new trails from Bridge to Maple Street and the portion of the land conveyed to the town is part of the open space plan. Scott Bugby seconded, and so it was voted.
Well, that's to construct new ones, but if, if we were to say, oh, well, you can still put a marker on the trailhead there. I mean, it's still a trail, it's just not gonna be constructed.
We don't wanna make this painful, I mean, trails have been, you know, such, uh, lots been a long.
The town can specify exactly what they want, and I will try and comply.
Well, it's, it's in the plans, I mean, I mean.
So, you want these kissing gates and all that stuff?
I mean, as far as, as far as I know, that's, that survives this whole process. I mean, those trails survive, you know, whatever decision the Board of Selectmen made, those trails are existing and survive that.
They exist, right.
My, my point is that it says no new construction.
Well, that's what we're saying, you don't have to construct.
But they put no new construction between two points, didn't they say between two points?
No, Rob Garrity moved that no new trails from Bridge to Maple Street.
Bridge to Maple.
No new trails.
And the portion of land conveyed to the town is part of the open space plan.
Bridge to Maple.
Bridge to Maple.
Where's Bridge?
He's talking about, I, I ca- I can only assume that there is a bridge on the gravel drive just before you enter into the woods.
No, no, there is a bridge.
It's over here.
Yeah, I know where it is.
He means this, he means that trail, he means, he means, don't, he means, don't construct the, the red, the red, uh, dash.
So, there is, there is a bridge, which is.
Okay, can I hear the rest of that mo- motion there?
Legally installed some years ago, but it exists.
But it exists, it exists.
That's, that's dealing with one trail, which would have been, well, I guess we could discuss whether it'd be new or not, but that's off the table. That's good for you, that's, we don't need to talk about that.
They said no new trails from the Bridge to Maple Street and the portion of the land conveyed to the town is part of the open space plan. So, any land on this plan that was part of the open space land conveyed to the town, as far as I'm concerned, the Board of Selectmen said no new construction.
No, they said no new trails.
And the trails, no new trail construction.
That's from the motion. Did you just read that?
That's what I did, no new trail construction.
Okay, so first of all, the segment from Maple, not Maple, it's, uh, Warren, to the, the rear edge of the development, and that, that side of the road in terms of Warren.
We're trying to.
That's not an open space, you know, cr-
It is an open space. That little strip of land is part of the open space.
That is a permanent access for the.
But it is part, it is part of the open space. It is absolutely in the calculations.
Well, I mean, you're gonna have a pump house there, I mean, I don't know, I don't consider a pump house open space, I mean, from my definition, but, um, but I mean, that's certainly my expectation that you're gonna put in that trail segment, short segment, and it provides a permanent access to whatever trails, even though they're not formal trails, if they're, you know, if people have been using those woods and such, and they're comfortable with that access, then they should be able to access it there. 'Cause who knows what you're gonna do in, in some of these other areas, and it, and it could prevent people from having access, so we don't want that to happen.
All right, so, that needs to be constructed.
My opinion, yeah, and it actually shows up in the decision as a, a unique item in the decision.
What else needs to be done?
Okay, so, and we can, I'm not familiar with these devices, um, I don't know if anyone else on the board is, but there's two of them to deter four-wheel.
This is on Lot seventy-two, right? This is the equestrian facility.
Well, they're not clear in terms of the way the G is on, I don't see a line and an arrow, or, but I assume that it's on this trail.
What about this one over here?
I mean, we assumed that it was on that trail as well, I mean, Tom, is that?
Yeah, I, I think schematically it's indicating that the gate should be in that approximate location on the trail.
So, A is a trailhead and G is the gate.
A describe, yeah, it's a trailhead describes the.
This is private property right here.
Well, then she'd it back to the, where the trail begins, that the existing trail. I mean, I don't think it's that important.
And this, this is not even existing at the moment.
Well, Tom, Tom, you felt that that, it was actually associated with this.
I, I thought it was meant to be where the.
Not, not associated with this.
No, it's associated with the green trail, I believe.
The green trail.
Yeah.
So, does it go down here? 'Cause this little driveway is coming out.
I think it was meant to be where, isn't there an ability to park down there?
At the equestrian facility?
Mm-hmm, and you?
I don't think so.
Oh, at, at, in the original, in the original proposal, um, there was, that, as the equestrian facility, there was gonna be some side parking.
Right, but that's all gone.
Well, that's probably why the trailhead was identified there, because that's where we thought people were gonna drop their cars. 'Cause weren't you parking on town property?
I mean, uh.
Oh, that. That was over here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
This? I mean, does this, are this gate stuff, is it right there, is that where it's pointing?
Roads, trail, pedestrian determination, off, no?
That looks kind of over where the compost pile is, was.
I mean, the way I read this drawing, I read this green segment to be the continuation of that.
Right, but this little driveway is going away. They're gonna, they're gonna access the property to further food location.
But how do you get from the trail to the road?
You have to go, you have to go this way, you have to go through this line.
So, there's no, but that doesn't exist.
That's my point.
Well, where's it show up on a plan for it to go away, what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not over on this one, on this one it exists. And that's a road that ends, and then a green trail begins at the end of the road.
Okay, my, my point is that this is on Lot seventy-two. So, this is private property, I can't put a gate there.
So, how far back do you need to go?
I can put it in here, unless, if the town gives the per- permission, that's town-owned land, it can go there.
And what the gate, what would the purpose of the gate be over there?
Well, well, I guess if the four-wheel can't access the woods.
This is a gravel, this is, this is a gravel drive, and this is where.
It is, that is correct.
So, that would be where the, that, they're not gonna be going down into this grassy area. It's wet, it's low, they're gonna use the gravel drive, so, um, you can't, if you can't put a gate, that's where the gate needs to be, if it can't be placed on private property, then there's no reason to put it anywhere else.
The larger issue is if this can't continue to be here.
Actually, I'm taking it back, this driveway is gonna be here.
Yeah, that's the first I heard of that.
So, my question is, how is this trail even accessed, because it's on Lot seventy-two, until it reaches that line. I certainly could put a gate there, that's in the open space.
Well, you know, the, the trail plan that's part of the approved subdivision plan.
Just this one?
Indicates there'll be a trail there, and I, if there's not, then I guess the subdivision has to be bought.
This is definitely a road, there's a road there, I mean, I'm not denying that.
No, I understand, but if it, if it ends here and ends here, it doesn't make any sense.
You have to be able to.
A- 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 and the approved plan indicated you could start here and walk to the end of the trail, which I guess is why it's there.
Well, you, you would walk there, and then it would connect over to here.
Over to what?
Over to here, that, see, that was supposed to be a trail connecting here with over here.
Right, but that's not gonna be constructed anymore.
Why?
Because it's new construction.
Oh, for God's sakes, they were only talking about this section that night. They never spoke to, about the rest of it. I know what that says, but they never, they were, they, they never were speaking of a plan for a section of, of trail, except for that one section of blue and red.
I guess we need to get them to clarify it, then.
You were there that night, Jeff.
Well, I was, I mean, my input was.
It was only that.
Yeah, it was that.
And that's my piece, and I, quite frankly, the rest of this, you know, having not been on the board when all these trails were discussed.
Well, but I don't think the Selectmen were talking about it either. I don't think they, I don't think they intended their decision to be considered more globally than the Bridge to Maple Street.
And the portion of land conveyed to the town is part of open space. That includes all of the open space.
I don't think they intended that.
Well, that's what it says in the decision.
I know, I know that's what it says in the decision, but it is out of context to the discussion that occurred.
Okay.
We agree that that trail goes.
Definitely needs to be clarification.
Except for that, that exists.
You, you agree that that segment at the pump house has to be constructed, yes? Okay, okay, so that's simple stuff. So, now, we have to deal with this area here.
Okay, and I guess my suggestion is that, you know, we do a walk, and I was hoping that was gonna take place, but, you know, it didn't. So, I'm, I'm prepared to, to join, join you and other members of the board, perhaps, and just try to get this right.
Well, I'd like the Planning Board to, to clarify whether or not they want plans in the open space.
Yeah, of course.
From the Selectmen.
We can do that, I'm sure the, the Selectmen, they, they want what's best for the residents of the town. So, if there's some question, some concern as far as the language, I'm sure that it's something that we can work through. You know, before something is constructed or not constructed, and then this becomes an issue for access and such in the future, which we don't want that to happen, and I'm sure the Board of Selectmen don't want that to happen, so. So, let's, let's schedule something.
What, what's coming up tonight is this question about private, uh, uh, trail starting on private land. It was not, um, the reason the trail that topped the green started right next to the, um, barn is because it, it was, um, it was gonna be public access down there. And so, he's suggesting that there may not be the ability to come down this drive. Um, and if that's true, then that's, that's very significant, 'cause it, it cuts out a huge portion of the property.
All right, let's, let's take a look, I'm sure we can come up with something that everyone's gonna live with.
So, that should be, that should be viewed.
I know, Mr. Daley made it clear to, to the Board of Selectmen that he didn't want trails on the side.
You know, I, um, was watching the video, I heard something different.
Okay.
Okay, so, in terms of, uh, a date. Okay, ideally, we set a date to go out there to the property, and hopefully, the weather's gonna be on our side here going forward.
This coming weekend is actually supposed to be fifty degrees. Well, Saturday's not.
I'm not sure I'm gonna be around, I'm not sure I'm gonna be around, yeah.
I, I can't this weekend myself, but.
Yeah, so the weekend is, is not good.
The weekend after?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
What is the weekend after?
That's it?
C and Route six. It's like a six.
I have an affidavit.
April sixth.
Is a huge proportion, I haven't started, it's due on Mondays. It's a week, it's an Easter weekend to work, unfortunately.
Um, yeah, yeah, that, that works for me, April sixth.
It would be, it might be.
In the morning?
It might be really advantageous to invite. It might be really, um, advantageous to invite a selectman down.
It would be, yeah.
I'd also invite, uh, Howard Bailey, Kathy Kiderka, as the property owners, to make sure what they will or will not allow on that property.
It's, uh, it, it's, just don't even go there, cause it's.
Okay, uh, time, morning?
Yes.
Like morning clock or something like that?
Nine o'clock is good.
April sixth, nine o'clock.
Nine?
I'm not sure that we're gonna be in town, but you know what, every, you know, I haven't been very successful with my interpretation of where to put trails, so. Guys, you guys feel free.
Okay, April sixth, nine AM.
Well, let's see now, where would we need?
I'd meet at the barn.
Somewhere up Warren Drive.
Steve, you're at the top of the trails.
I would cut through the woods over here.
Is there parking up there? Is there parking for us?
Park here, this is a good place.
There's a whole new road in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Park on the edge of the road.
Park right here, round along the curb. Where the traffic circle is.
There you go.
Okay, I'm sure we'll be able to find each other. Okay, nine AM, alright, thank you, thank you.
See you, Walter.
See you.
Do you see, do you, do you know where this is? On Maple Street, have you driven up there yet?
I have, yep.
Beautiful property. Just on this first, um. Yeah, if I had one mega billion, mega millions, I would've bought it, it would've still a horse farm.
It was beautiful property.
Okay.
Sure was, I agree.
Well, it's rumored now.
Okay, new business? Yep.
Yeah, that's separate.
That's, well, that's actually related to this.
No, this is separate.
Oh, trust that he's not here for that.
I thought we told him.
Walter's not here for that.
Right.
No, but he did tell me that he, he agrees with, um, Bob McGee's figure, and would like the board to move forward with that.
Right, and we even told him last time he didn't have to be here for it.
So is that in our package?
Yeah, this is a two pager.
The DPW is recommending a reduction of the bond to the, in the amounts. Reducing it from sixty-nine, seven fifty-five to twenty-eight, five eighty-five. And that is specific to the Maple Street improvements.
Okay, I did talk to Bob, but I hadn't talked to him about the specific, um, numbers, but they're here.
Well, thi- this, this is asphalt sidewalk and top course of pavement, i- is all that's listed as being left. I, I don't see anything that says that all the trees have been planted, and I, I don't, I don't know what's been done.
Well, I think the trees that are over there with the existing, you know the issue with the sidewalk, right, it's not high enough, so it's a safety issue.
That's on Maple Street, right.
Maple Street, which is what that comment, this is all relative to Maple.
But I, but I thought that none, none of that stuff on Maple Street. Judging by Bob McGee's comments originally, I didn't think that there was any change to what had been done out there.
Well, you know, he has to elevate, they have to elevate the side.
Right, they have to, right, but have they done it?
And then he, um, negotiated with them the scenario regarding the paving, um, cause they think he has plans to do a larger section of Maple Street.
Right.
With the chapter seventy money, you know, so he wants to put this.
Oh, Bob does.
I, I think so, this is just part, this is their piece of, I think, of what will be a larger project for Maple Street.
Yes.
Is my understanding.
Yeah.
I think that's also separate apart, I think that's what his plan is with, uh, Trozey as well, just to move things along. So, he's trying to leverage both pieces.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, well, I, I was just trying to figure out, because I've driven by it and I haven't seen any change, and I knew that Bob had specific comments on it, so I was wondering how there was a reduction if.
Yeah, I, I know he worked, I, I mean, I wouldn't be too concerned with, you know, Camo and Pulte on this.
Yeah.
You know, they've, they've come through each time.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay, cause it was consistent with what he had told me a few weeks ago.
Well, I'll make that motion too, I'm gonna round this up a little bit. I, I'll, to reduce the bond for the, uh, Maple Street improvements associated with Toils End subdivision, reduce the bond to twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Solution's been made and seconded, further discussion?
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business bets?
I don't see anything in here.
Okay, so public hearing for town meeting zoning articles, uh, so you sent, you sent out the advertisements for April eleventh, EPM. We have some vouchers here. We have some.
Did Michelle replace anybody?
I think we changed the fourth to. The executive session, um, minutes, I'd like to, uh, defer that, cause I wanna go through that, uh, a little more closely. No, it's good, it's good, good theory, yeah, it's, it's good. So anything we need to adjust here for April eleventh, given the conversations tonight, that's, so.
We've got our, um, the only other, we have our public hearing at eight o'clock for the town meeting zoning articles, we've got an eight-thirty public hearing for the medical building at the corner of Pine and Valley. And then I had a request, um, from Mr. Ahmed for pre-submission meeting regarding, uh, potential site plan for one oh eight Main Street.
Where's one oh eight Main?
Which one oh eight Main, do you know where one oh eight is?
Anderson's property.
Which one's Anderson's?
Right next to.
Oh, oh, okay.
What's that look like?
So, so Bets, just, just wondering.
He's supposed to send me a plan this week, so forwarded a law, just a conceptual.
Yeah.
We have just a half hour here for the public hearing, I mean, should we open that up further, or, I mean, I guess it, it is what it is, I mean, if we end up running late, I guess, um.
Well, the two public hearings are scheduled, so.
So it's, we can't really adjust it, okay.
We can't adjust those, but I put him on at seven thirty, just for a quick. Meeting before we get going with our public hearings, cause those could potentially be.
Okay.
Like they.
No, he has another one.
Okay.
So we have.
If we have to, we can, we can delay, we can, we can post, postpone this for a little while and then pick it up again after.
And we'll have a, uh, a decision to review for ten forty-two Dedham Street. And I think Fern Ridge is gonna.
Is there anything other than what we discussed?
No, there were a lot of things, there were a lot of things that were floating around that weren't part of the motion.
Yes, there are.
Now, is I correct that, because I, I viewed the, I viewed the file, the, the, um, video the night I had to leave early, but then I missed last week, the last hearing. I can't vote on two forty-two?
You may not be able to.
Cause I viewed one and I missed one.
You missed one?
I did view, I was halfway, I was wa- watched it, I was here for part of it and then left, so I re-ued the rest of it.
Yeah, if you miss two, you can't, you can only make up one, technically you're supposed to see all of them, but you're only allowed under the law to make up one.
Make up one, so I was ha- I was here for half of it, so I assume that now that you're officially voting, I'm assuming I'm not voting.
Well, we didn't need to vote anyway, we'd had four anyway, right?
Who would've go forward, yeah.
Well, she was in favor, so it could just be abstain and it would still go forward.
Okay, um, I'm just a little concerned.
If I have to view something, I will.
Busy with the two public hearings and I think Fern Ridge and.
Potentially open, although that's just an endorsement, but.
That should just be an endorsement. What are you concerned about?
Um, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get it all in.
What else?
I don't think the public hearings are gonna take long at all, to be honest with you.
I don't think they are, they are.
Well, I think it depends on whether anybody shows up, you know, I'd like.
I mean, the, these are pretty, deep down more like development-driven type of zoning changes that, I don't think you're gonna see much.
Well, the C one, correct, but, you know, I mean, I know on the floor of town meeting, you know, there was a lot of discussion, you know, on Article sixteen in the fall. And, you know, those discussions, it'd be nice if they happened in the public hearing, it's great that they happen at town meeting, don't get me wrong, but to the extent that some of that stuff could be vetted, you know, in a public hearing, this is gonna be a wonderful thing, but so. If it's not well attended, it may be fairly short. Okay, I guess we'll, we'll go with it and.
I don't know, it's gonna be short.
I know, but. So aside from vouchers, you have anything else for us tonight?
Nope, does he wanna work on the decision for two forty-two?
No.
No?
Well, J- Tom, I mean, I can, I can work with Tom and feedback.
Yeah, he can, he can, he's been saying anything in.
Before we end.
I wondered where this came from, I hadn't seen this.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I know, this is actually the, what we were talking, what we've been talking about with the, the, uh, decision from, if you wanna see this, Tom. Sorry, from town council regarding that, the whole issue with the, uh, with the car wash, so. Anyone wants to see what they, the conclusion was that they had gotten, it's in here. And, uh, and I, I think that, that they're ki- they are kind of dropping the ball on this, that they, that there's a lot more that they can do, that they. A- and, and their response to this was, get Bob Bullock to get rid of the frontage road, that was, that was their solution to whatever problem is down here. So that's how the.
They weren't looking at it as planners, they were looking at it as lawyers.
Yeah, so they just wanted to get rid of the frontage road, and that's why they had Bob Bullock draft something to get rid of the frontage road, and that's, and it, it all came from this.
I, that's not something I'm gonna likely to support.
Getting rid of the frontage road?
Yeah.
I, um, didn't agree with a lot of the things that Al was saying, but I did agree with some of the things he was saying, and I, I also agree that the town has dropped the ball on this, and I think as much as we as a board can have some influence. By at least speaking our voice, if not as a board, then I'll speak my voice as a private citizen in the town, cause I think what they've done is wrong.
Yes.
Well, I actually, I took a, a little bit of, um, uh, I kinda disagreed that when, when a planning board decision says that something has to get recorded. The decision says it has to get recorded, but it's not up to the planning board to go, you know, scurrying down the town hall, just scurrying down up to the registry to see if it got recorded or not. He's supposed to record it, he doesn't record it, it's a, it's a violation of his decision, we can take an action on it, but it's not our responsibility to make sure he does it.
I agree, I've, I've gotten special permits in this town before, and it was made very clear to me that I had to get down in Norfolk County and get it done by a date certain. So I, I totally agree.
I agree.
And, and you know, the scary thing is this, if they could ignore the contract, because that's what I consider an order condition. Can they ignore, you know, the, the ZDA, can they ignore the Concom?
I, I think it's a, I think it's a very, um, I think it's a, it's a very unwise decision to have that conversation in a public hearing and not take an action based on it. I think we, I think it's a, I think it looks really bad.
It is really bad. And, and even if it's not the board's responsibility, and I agree with you, to enforce that.
Now that we know.
The fact that it's been raised and the, and the town's just gonna say, well, too bad.
Yeah.
It's just not right.
I, I agree, I, early on in this email, um, she says, send it, she says, send an enforcement letter, may not be effective, but send it, so send it.
Something, right, do something.
Just send it. Though may not be effective is just a personal opinion.
Right.
I didn't read that that was hers, I thought that was a summation by the author.
Um, well.
It could be either way.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was said that they could write an enforcement letter.
Try and enforce a fine. Try it.
Try to put up the sign.
There's a lot of things that could be done.
I, I think we owe it to, to, um, to Mr. Car Wash, but I'm a short timer now.
Well, the other thing is this, is, here you got.
I think we owe it to the citizens and future developers of Norfolk.
Well, not only that, but also, Michelle, as you just saw, what we pointed out, we have a proposal for exactly what we wanted to happen in that commercial, these, we have got an MOB coming in at thirty-six thousand feet, hundred and eighty-two cars, uh, if you saw the filing they just put in this week. Then conceptually, I got an email from Betsy on Quagliari's one, that's put in twenty thousand, uh, square feet and seventy-five cars.
Oh, it's not the same development, it's two separate?
No, they're right across Valley Street from each other.
Oh.
But, you know, finally, we're getting what we hoped for, non, y- y- you know, non-residential tax impact.
And this is how the town's gonna deal with it?
And now we have kind of convoluted that, I mean, Tom, Tom, you know, to be fair to Tom, yes, you have to look into the traffic thing, it was just so much extenuating circumstance, Tom. But the thing is now, we do have a conflagration of a lot of. Everything coming into that one intersection, yeah, that's the one thing that's, uh.
Good stuff.
And, and I think that's what, you know, concerned, I think, Al Quagliari for staying on later, he's saying, my god, I've spent a lot of the money down in your district to build, I just wanna make sure that this one decision doesn't turn everything upside down.
Do we, do we have to have some kind of vote to, um, move on the Joffrin decision by asking for an enforcement letter be sent by Bob Bullock?
Uh, based on town council, I'm not in favor of that, um, action.
Is it just this, right here? Is it, is there something besides what's right here?
I mean, that's what I'm aware of, right there.
Cause I, I mean, she, at the beginning, at the beginning of this, it says, I don't, I, I, they could write an enforcement letter, which I believe would be fine.
Which would be a fine.
Which I, okay.
A fine, which would be a dollar figure per day.
Based on the, based on the terms of the decision. Um, the, the, the second sentence after that, uh, Peter, Peter thought that wasn't town council?
I'm guessing, I said you could read it either way. Yeah, the author is, is one that said that, my suspicion is that the process is relatively slow.
But you know, the sad thing is, if this letter came out in January at nine grand a month, I don't care how big your business is, you feel that.
Right.
That's wasting money down the drain.
Even if the process is slow and may not lead to resolution, it's taking a step, it's doing something.
I don't see, this doesn't look like a legal opinion.
Well, this is an interpretation of a legal opinion, you know, lawyers are entitled to opinions, so are you, so are you.
You know, lawyers are entitled to opinions. So are you, so are you, so are you.
Well, i- it's a summary of a discussion, not a written legal opinion.
I understand, but they were given direction, too.
Yeah.
This was written back in January?
I don't have the date on here.
I met at the property as, um, Mr. Bravens or one of the folks mentioned I had met at the property.
Yeah, that was early, it was, when Joffrin first came in to them, came in to identify himself.
Tom Houston's there. So, um, I wrote, uh, I wrote something, I, you know, I think, I know all of you received a copy, just, uh, informing everyone of the conversation that took place, and, um.
Was it?
Yeah, it was December.
Yeah, and, uh, I asked at that time for some legal guidance, and that's what came back.
This is what came back?
But this is an interpretation of legal guidance.
I think, given the fact that we approved a minor modification tonight, as an interim measure, it's our responsibility to go to the town once more and say, the plan's been changed, but on an interim basis. So our recommendation and our preference would be you continue pursuing the permanent, preferred, approved site plan of using the frontage road, period.
And that's what the applicant would prefer.
And we're trying to flex our influence a little bit and saying, you know, this isn't a case closed.
I mean, I have no problem passing that.
I think it should come from the planning board in total.
Absolutely.
Well, when I, I, I would be happy to pass along the fact that there's a majority of members on the planning board that would like to see the town pursue the issue. I would be happy to do that. I am not in favor of us taking this up as formal business and having a vote on, on the matter. I just don't see it as being productive or necessary.
Well, I, I disagree with that. I think it should be, I think it should come from the board.
Well, that, I think it would be quite clear if the chairman of the planning board is providing that perspective to the board of selectmen and the town manager. And I'll be happy to take it up again at our next meeting.
I think, I think Michelle enunciated it quite perfectly, and I think that should be, I think that should be the request of our board to move forward.
I prefer it to be on record.
I agree.
I think it is on record that a majority of the members of the planning board believe that the town should take action, so it's on record, and I'll write something to the board of selectmen, the town manager, that that is the opinion of the planning board. Be happy to do that.
But it is not, but it's not something from the chairman. It has to be something from the board. It's the board that has to send a letter that says that we want an enforcement.
Betsy, would you please write the letter to the board of selectmen and the town manager?
And having a pretty, you know, for lack of a better term, macro view of that area going forward, knowing what we are going to be seeing in the next month and two, it's important that we, they understand that we're handling a lot of driveways coming up here soon.
Okay, any other business, folks?
Did I miss, uh, the discussion on the zoning articles?
That, well, that'll be up on the eleven.
When I went to the bathroom?
That's the public hearing.
Okay, I just saw it, I saw it listed above as well.
I figured it's listed as, isn't it listed as a?
Public hearing up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure you don't forget it.
Okay.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Eleven o'clock, it's too early.
Motion's been made, it's been seconded.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for joining the Norfolk Planning Board. Goodnight, folks.